The meeting will come to order. For the record, it is Tuesday, March 3rd, 2020, at 4:30 PM. We'll begin this City Council work session with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Borton?
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh?
Here.
Councilwoman Perot?
Here.
Councilwoman Strater?
Here.
Councilman Hoagland?
Here.
Councilman Burnt?
Mayor Simison?
Here. Item number two is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Burt?
I move that we adopt the agenda as published.
I'll second.
I have a motion in second to adopt the agenda as published. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Motion is adopted. Item three, consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Burt?
I move that we approve the consent agenda for the mayor to sign and the clerk to attest.
Second.
I have a motion in second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Motion is adopted. There were no items moved from the consent agenda, so we're going to go into item 5A, Department Report from our Historic Preservation Commission, which will be given by Blaine Johnson and an assist from Josh Everts. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you. We're not unmuted. I don't know if you can hear us or not. My name is Blaine Johnson. I'm president of Meridian Historic Preservation Commission. You all know Josh. He's our cohort in crime. Just here to give you a presentation on what we've done this past year. And just like to thank Mr. Mayor and the council for the opportunity to do this. Our commissioning is a diverse and enthusiastic group of volunteer commissioners. The commission has been fortunate to retain most of our commissioners. This year, we added Donna Lucigan to the commission, and we look forward to working with her. In addition, we have Brian Fitzgerald, who was our junior at Mountain View High School, and will serve as our new student commissioner. We hope we can retain Brian for his senior year of high school, which will continue to give us the commission some continuity and give Brian some additional experience. We have an engaging local students campaign, and we've expanded that campaign this year to encompass a wider range of students and projects to be accepted. We also open the competition up to all school agencies. The commission will continue to develop this program and to get more students involved with historic preservation and hope to find more creative ways to feature their work. After that, Josh's turn.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, City Council. Josh Everts, I'm the vice president for Historic Preservation Commission in the city of Meridian. Yeah, I'm going to follow on and talk a little bit about some of our initiatives last year. So our Historic Preservation Month is in the month of May. Last year, we had actually one of our biggest turnouts, so we decided that I would lead tours in downtown Meridian, so...
Josh tells all the truth.
Yes, yeah. Well, most of this will be true, but we... Most of the stories that I tell out on the walking tour are truth. But we like to add color at times. But, um, yeah, so we had a group of... A very, very large group, primarily because we got two of our historic property owners willing to open their homes. So the Bell House, the owners of that home, opened it up for locals to walk through, even though they're not a part of the Bell family. They just bought the home a couple of years ago. They were willing to open it up for the public to see. And then Richard Nurse, Dick Nurse, Nurse family is one of the largest landowners in Meridian. Dick's lived there, I think, for a million years. But Dick was willing to open up his home, which is basically a museum. And we did a small group walking tours, because that's all you can take through his house is maybe four to six people at a time. We set up a tent out front where he had some artifacts laid out of Meridian history. So we had a great turnout. So this year, we're going to be doing the same thing. I believe it's on the 28th of May. So it's always a Thursday night. We do our commission meeting, and then we're going to do those same tours and hopefully get the same access to those properties. Likewise, our historic walking tour, Walking Tour App, we continue to partner with our Downtown Business Association. They are partnered with us in helping offset the cost of that. We continue to make improvements to that. One of the things we're going to show you later is some virtual tours that we've paid for as a commission. We are going to get those tours linked up on that Walking Tour App to kind of bring all these technologies together. So we're excited about rolling that out. The other thing is, is we always put out our "If Our Properties Could Talk" walking signs, so those will be going out in the month of May in front of historic businesses and making those stories available. We do have some historic properties that are turning over right now, and new businesses are going in. I'm primarily talking about the Saddle Shop on Broadway right now. So it's going to be kind of a new property to show off, where we'll have pictures of what the old Saddle Shop looked like, and yet you'll be able to see something new in there as far as a new business going into our downtown. The other thing that we put out last year was this barn calendar. So this was part of our historic month. We went and had photos done as part of us preserving history of these barns, some of which are in the process of being torn down. So we try to activate our teams when we find out, and that's really our good cooperation with city planners. When we find out a historic property shows up with a permit or something that's going to happen there, we tend to activate as a commission to make sure that we gather pictures, video, history of that site before we might lose that site to development. So that's a big part of what we're doing as a commission as well. Community outreach, again, that kind of talks about all the land development applications. One relationship that happened, so there was a Warwick Barn that was demolished for the creation of a new subdivision by Schultz Development. In us reaching out to them, they understood the value of that. So they created an infographic and put it at the location representing the area and installation of this kind of panel at other historic sites is something that we're going to continue to pursue as a commission where it's appropriate and where it makes sense, just so that we don't lose these little artifacts of history as we continue to develop as a city. Community recognition. Frank Thomason, that you guys probably all know, received the Making History Award from the Ada County Historic Preservation Council. His years of service were recognized from the county, which was another wonderful opportunity to show, you know, the work that he had done in the city of Meridian. Our third grade tours, we continue to partner with West Ada School District and MDC to support the third grade field trips. And though we don't have significant manpower or funding contributions that we make to them, we do support supplies for the volunteers who lead the tours at City Hall. That's something we're proud of. We did undergo a brand change, so you'll see it in the new Walking Tour brochures that come out. We wanted to have a logo that was a little bit more reflective of the history of Meridian that tied better with some of the... Excuse me, city branding. So we had that logo done by a local design firm that volunteered to donate that to us, gave us some options to look at, and we picked one. So it'll be a part of our materials going forward. And I guess, last but not least, one of the things we wanted to show you, and hopefully... Are you guys seeing a shot of Main Street right now?
Yep.
Okay, so Hull Films, which is based here in Meridian, they do unbelievable virtual tours throughout the country to some of the most historic sites that are out there. He happens to be a Meridian resident, a long-term Meridian resident. We had engaged with him last year to talk about what would it look like to start creating some virtual tours of significant areas in our downtown. So this was a prototype that we did for this intersection of... We actually did three. We did the Main Street and Broadway intersection, Pine Street School and Black Cat Farm. So as you can see, he builds a 3D wraparound image of this block. I think one of the real significant things about showcasing this right now and why it's important to be, I'm sorry, gathering these kinds of artifacts is these buildings don't exist anymore. So while we're doing these kinds of efforts and grabbing these kind of snapshots in time, we're creating this legacy of what's actually transpiring. I would have loved to have had the technology to see, for example, this view 15 years ago. Like, that would be, you know, a really, really cool kind of element to have. And one of the things that Hull's talking about is overlaying some of the historic images with this. But all of these things have the ability where you can click into. For example, on this one hotspot, we can show this creamery picture and get some additional details about the creamery. As we pan around this view, we'll have another point where this is a gallery of Main Street pictures. So this happens to be one of six. I think we can click through these pretty quickly, but gives us some different views of photographs that he's taken along this way. So they can be everything from photographs, old photographs, videos. We kind of can put any kind of media. And now that we've mapped this sort of Main Street location, anything we want to do in the future to augment that, we can just drop those elements in there. What's interesting about the Pine Street Schools, we did a very similar tour. So we started with the outside of the building. So again, we get an idea of where it sits in relationship to everything else. We do have a map view that's down here in the left-hand corner, so we can see that. The thing that I found very interesting about this, though, is we actually had them come in and do an interior shoot as well. So in the interior of this, all these different elements... So this was the Kessler Teacher Certificate that Betty Kessler had for teaching there. So all these things that are sitting in archives through the Historic Preservation Office, these are all elements that we can make available to the public. And one of the initiatives that we're looking at for this upcoming year is potentially sponsoring a kiosk in our main entrance for City Hall here, so that we're not limited by the hours of Wednesday only. We've seen that there's an influx, like voting days, where a lot of people come in, and we'll see an increased desire for people to get to historical materials, but we're not always open, or the Historic Preservation. That office isn't open. So having a kiosk that has this kind of an interface, we think, might be a real value add for residents that are coming and transacting businesses at City Hall. So with all of that, do you guys have any questions for us?
Council, any questions?
Mayor?
Councilman Cavanagh?
No questions, just a comment. This virtual tour stuff is just remarkable.
Thank you.
In a former life, I got to work with Brandon on some projects, and I remember, this is now 12, 13, 14 years ago, he was talking about what it could be, and we talked about Meridian. And so to see actually now that he's created something of Meridian is really remarkable. And I just think if this is something that we continue to update, you know, I think our grandkids will be able to look back and say, here's what... If one day our current City Hall is known as Old City Hall, and we've got something else that's going, I mean, I think it's really remarkable to be able to capture this and hold on to it. And I just applaud you guys, again, always moving forward, and this is another great example, a way to capture our history, but in a really unique manner.
Councilman Cavanagh, thank you so much for that. I would say that we're also trying to really lean in as budget allows us. I think our next corner we want to take on is Broadway and Second, just with the potential new development that's happening there. That whole block with VRT and everything that's happening there is going to look very different a year from now. So being able to capture the today is important.
Exactly.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Hoagland?
Josh Blaine, appreciate your enthusiasm and excitement in preserving history. I share that passion. Just wanted to find out, I like your kiosk idea.
Yeah.
What's the timeframe for that that you're looking at, or are you that far in the planning?
Councilman Hoagland, that's a great question. We spoke about it at our Commissioner meeting last week. I'm doing research this month with Brandon, because he's done these kiosks and other sites. So I'm to come back to our commission with a cost for that and kind of a proposal. I think it's going to be a very modest cost, just based on some preliminary research that I've done. So I believe that we could probably make a submission for that budget expenditure at our next council meeting. And my desire would be to have that kiosk up and available by May for Historic Preservation. I think that might be aggressive, but the tech... We already have the tour built. That's the tough part. So, and even though it's only three sites, I think getting the kiosk in place would be a big win for potential Historic Preservation Month. So that'd be my goal, but if it, you know, slips a month, that's okay, too.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for that, and whenever it gets done, it's going to be exciting to see.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for doing it.
We agree.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor, you're here.
Thank you so much. This is a really great update, and it's exciting to see how you're blending new technology with all of the history. I think that's great. I just wanted to mention one idea. The 100-year anniversary of women's suffrage is coming up soon, and a lot of different cities are looking at doing things, including Meridian. And I just wanted to throw out there, if there is any way you come across historical photographs of the women's suffrage movement in Meridian, or anything that, you know, kind of aligns with that topic, I think people would love to see that, because it's sort of, you know, now all of the cities here are kind of looking back through history now at a 100-year anniversary. So just wanted to put that on your radar, if you can think of anything that might fit that topic.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Perfect suggestion. Just what we're looking for is ideas like that. We can put on Facebook. We create an Instagram page for that same item, so, perfect. Thank you so much.
Yeah. A related question. Is the Bell operational on the Pine Street Schoolhouse?
That's... I don't know. Is it?
Councilman Cavanagh?
As of 2011... Sorry, Dean. I ring it in 2011, so as of 2011, it was still ringable.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All right.
Thank you so much.
Wonderful. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Next up to the podium, 5B Human Resources Annual Report. Russell, thank you very much.
All right. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Thank you so much for having us today. I am here representing the HR department in regards to the annual report for 2019. I'm going to walk you through some information as it's related here on the slide, anywhere from some of the areas of support that we provide to the departments, and then, of course, I'll stand for any questions that you may have. So first, I'd like to just take a look at our HR department as it exists today. We are a department of six, and we provide many services and support to the departments across the city, as well as the employees. We have an 11-bubble graphic here that represents the different aspects and services that we provide to 500-plus employees at any moment of any day. So this is your current Human Resources team. We have two new additions in 2019, so I want to take a moment to call out Jess Earnshaw. She is our new administrative assistant upstairs, and she's been with us a year this month. And then we also joined... Or had Reba White join us back in August as our benefits specialist. So we were really excited to bring them on board. And I'd like to take a moment here and thank everyone on the HR team for everything that they do on a daily basis, for you, for the employees, to keep things running, to keep things going. They accomplish a lot, which you will see through this presentation, but we certainly couldn't do what we do without them. So we often get asked, how do we do what we do? And some of you have seen this particular slide before, but we do it by teamwork. We do a lot. We support each other. We help each other out, so that we can do everything that we need to do to make sure that we are meeting the needs of the departments that we support and getting the services to the employees who have a need to reach out to Human Resources. So now I just want to take a moment and walk you through everything that we focused on and accomplished in 2019. Compliance. Employee engagement. Community focus. Training and development. Benefits and wellness. Compensation. Employee relations. And of course, we're focused this year, as well as last year, on some process improvements. As you can see here, it's been a very busy year, as it is for all of the departments across the city, so we're very proud of what we've accomplished this past year, and we're looking forward to 2020. So just a quick update on our strategic objectives. We started off with seven originally. We have closed out in 2019, three of those objectives, and you will be getting an additional strategic objective update on behalf of Vincent, I believe, later this month. So let's take a moment and focus on employment. So staffing and recruiting is a significant effort by the HR department and the team that we have, primarily with Christina Barney, Laura Lee Berg, Jess Earnshaw on the recruitment side of it. However, on the support side of staffing, we also have the addition of Jessica Moore. She helps bring everybody on board. So here's a little bit of information about our workforce today. You can see there, you have the average years of service by department and division. You have the highest years of service, which is representative of the member of that particular department or division and their highest number of years of service. Our city retention rate currently today is 89.9% for FY '19, I should say, and our city average years of service is 6.69 years. So we'd like to take a moment and recognize everyone across the city for their dedication and commitment here at the city of Meridian. Recruitment has kept us very, very busy. And when I say us, primarily Christina, Laura Lee, Jess, and Jessica. It's a partnership with the departments. It's teamwork within our own department, but you can see here that we have experienced a lot of recruitment this year. Just a couple of statistics for you. Last year, when we presented the annual report, we had processed approximately 3,500 applications. In 2019, it was 4,188. That's about an 18.5% increase of interest in employment with the city. Last year, we had 61 postings. This year, we had 85. We filled 164 positions this year. Last year, it was 147. The average number of reference checks when bringing a new employee on board went from 369 reference checks to 492. At the very bottom, you'll see the time to fill, from the time the position was posted and vacant to the time that we actually filled the position. Last year, at this time, it was 146 days, and currently, it's 106.4. So we had about a 27% decrease in that effort, and that's primarily due to the partnerships with the departments, the individuals on the panels, the interview panels, the hiring managers, and the recruiting staff in HR. Here's what we're currently working on as it relates to employment. So we are going to continue to recruit and fill the 24 positions that are currently out on the website today. We are going to be hopefully implementing our new e-recruit, our new online employment application tool here real soon. I want to take a special moment on behalf of the HR team to thank the IT team for all of their support in helping us develop this tool. It's going to be a user-friendly tool that is much more user-friendly to the public when they apply with the city, and also give us the administrative tools here within the city to manage that process. We will be looking at updating our exit interview process, as well as our reference check tools that we use when bringing employees on board. So let's touch on compensation administration. So HR is responsible for the administration, managing all of the employee compensation here at the city. As you can look at the chart in front of you, there's a lot that goes into compensation, anywhere from job offers to job classifications to employee communications to ensuring that we're compliant with FLSA standards, et cetera. And that's a team effort that we work on consistently throughout each year. One of the most significant and time-focused efforts that we have in regards to compensation is our performance evaluation process. The annual city cycle for general employees is every October. So collectively, we have to partner with the payroll department to make that happen in a very small window of time. And what you'll see here is we had 18 business days to process more than 200 evaluations and get those through for the November payroll. And that's a lot, because it's about auditing and reviewing and processing the paperwork, entering it into a system, getting it down to payroll, so that they can manage their processes as well with no errors. We want to say a special thank you to Amy in payroll for helping us with that. She is the single point of contact. I know she has a finance team that backs her up, but we do appreciate her supporting us in that effort every October. So as it relates to compensation, here are some of the things that we're working on today. So we are working on a general employee compensation program review. We have established a compensation committee who is focused on evaluating our compensation program to ensure that it is fair and competitive. We are working on an annual market review as we prepare for the annual budget process, a police step plan review, as well as we have participated in multiple salary studies in regards to compensation, and we're looking forward to getting those results and analyzing those results to see if any adjustments needed to be made here at the city. Benefit administration's been huge. You've had Christina here over the last year presenting to you and talking to you about self-funding. The benefits team, which consists primarily of Christina and Reba, are responsible for managing, assembling, and assisting employees in every aspect of their questions of their benefits. There is a benefits committee that does meet regularly to carefully evaluate our medical, dental, and vision plans. Reba and Christina facilitated 17 open enrollment meetings this year, along with a benefits fair and multiple wellness-focused activities. They also manage our workers' compensation program, along with our EAP program that's offered to our employees. With the wellness program this year, they did coordinate several events for city employees to participate in, and you'll see those there listed in front of you. They had two new additions to the current activities that we have in place. They offered a holiday potluck this year, as well as a family and friends Halloween costume contest, and they are proud to share with you that we were the recipient of the Workplace Health Achievement Award at the bronze level for the second year running from the American Heart Association. In regards to benefits, we're currently working on managing and administering the city of Meridian's employee benefits plan itself. We're analyzing our benefit valuation for Phase Two for the FY '21 budget, as well as anticipating the analysis of the benefits data that we participated in through surveys, so that we can ensure that we have a good pulse on where we are positioned as a city. We also have a lot of responsibilities in regards to training and development. You'll see here there are six different programs that are offered here that we've been offering over the course of a few years now to all of our employees here at the city. The new one that you see here today is succession planning. This past year, we did develop and implement succession planning here at the city. We're participating in, or have been participating in, our i-CRAMP Risk Management Discount Training Program, which does offer a discount to the city for their premiums, and the savings last year was a little over $17,000 of taxpayer dollars for the premiums that we pay for those services. And that is a thank you to all the city employees who participate in that program. They go through the training. We have 100% compliance, so that we have the ability to share relevant information to individuals, as well as receive the discount from our provider to the city. Here's a little information regarding the education reimbursement program. The city has a strong focus on the development of our employees, whether it's through training courses that we offer, training that they receive outside of the city. We also have an education reimbursement program for those who wish to participate, and you'll see here there's some historical data. With FY '19 listed, we have 16 participants. We anticipate 28 reimbursements, and you'll see some utilization there of those that actually benefit from the program. In regards to training, here are the things that we're focused on currently. We want to continue and close out the delivery of our Avoiding Discriminatory Harassment Training. We have a leadership development program that the committee meets on, that we're continuing the development of that program for 2020, as well as we have a strategic objective and a few other training deliverables that we're focused on this year. Another aspect of what we do is employee engagement, and what you have in front of you is just a representative of the things that we do to support that. We have our annual city employee picnic. This year, we recognized 62 employees for their years of service at a five-year milestone. We had our second all-employee meeting. We did have a United Way campaign again this year. It was Thanks For Giving, where we raised over $7,000 to give back to the community, and that was an effort from everyone here at the city who participated in that campaign. We have ongoing communications to our employees from Human Resources via our newsletter. And this past year, we also did a supervisor survey to solicit feedback of employees regarding the supervisors across the city, to give them an opportunity to give us some feedback that we can share and coach and develop our people. So currently, we're also focused on our employee engagement, working on the final development of an employee engagement program that's been a part of our strategic objectives. We are preparing for our annual or biannual employee engagement survey. We will be looking ahead to our next city employee meeting, as well as our United Way campaign in the fall. And last but not least, we have policy administration and compliance, and these things are really important to those of us on the legal aspect, as well as in human resources. We have a lot of new people at the city, and we do share the compliance line with them when they come through orientation, but we do have that mechanism for an employee to express concerns or questions through the compliance line hotline. And this past year, we had five reports of a concern that the Human Resource And this past year, we had five reports of a concern that the Human Resources Department looked into. We have been undergoing a significant review in partnership between Laura Lieberg and our Human Resources Department, and primarily Andrea Pogue and the Legal Department in reviewing and evaluating our current city policies and making sure that if any adjustments and changes need to be made, that we're working to make that happen and bring that forward at a point in time that's appropriate. This year, Christina reported out on our EEO4 reporting for the Equal Opportunity Commission. We have to do this report every two years. It's more or less a workforce data report that goes out, so we accomplished that this year, as well as delivering our avoiding discriminatory harassment training, which we will wrap up this year with our Police Department. So currently, under the compliance and policy arena, we are in the midst of an internal alignment, which is an evaluation of our job descriptions, classification, FLSA exemption status, et cetera, for the FY '21 budget. As I mentioned, we're doing a policy manual revision. We're going to continue our efforts regarding records retention. We're looking to do some research in regards to our background check providers as it relates to pre-employment or employment at the city, as well as wrapping up the delivery of our discriminatory and harassment training. So with that, I would stand for any questions that you have.
Thank you, Crystal. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselwoman Schrader.
Thank you very much, Crystal, for the presentation. At some point, you know, we're growing and we're trying to scale. It seems like you're scaling up your HR team, and I guess what I'm curious about is, at what point does an organization start to look more like an HR operations team and like leverage software and more, you know, sort of scalable approaches? Or just maybe give me a flavor for what kind of scalable technology and things like that that you're looking into?
So first and foremost, one of the most significant things that since we do is recruitment. We started looking at our online application tool, not only from the aspect of what the citizens encounter when they are utilized when they apply with us, but also from an administration tool perspective. So, we've gone through and partnered with our IT department to look at different types of software that were available for us to consider integrating or bringing onto the city. After a significant evaluation, we determined to work with our IT department to have them develop that for us because cities can be somewhat customized outside of what's out there in the marketplace. So, that's been a huge, significant effort for us this year as it will actually assist us in that process as the city continues to grow and we need to hire more people, et cetera. So, we're really excited about that, but that's been one of the things that we've considered or moved forward with. Other things to consider, which we're not quite there yet, we still are significantly paper-driven in the Human Resources Department. Would like to get that more automated over time. However, operationally, the demands that our customers need at this point in time have limited our ability to move forward in some of those areas.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselwoman Kavanagh.
I just want to echo Councilmember Schrader's comments about leveling up and automating our processes. I feel so bad for our staff who have to go through, and you so eloquently articulated the challenges at review time, of processing all of this review paperwork. And my belief is, private sector doesn't typically use paper and have found some much better approaches, and my hope is that sooner rather than later, we can start to embrace some of that. But my question was about, you touched on the cost of recruitment, just in terms of the cost related to advertising and marketing. And I don't expect you to have the answer, but what I'd like to get a sense is, you know, what does it cost the city to hire somebody? Both when you take into account the cost to advertise the position, the time of your team and department leadership to review that interview, candidates do the phone screenings and reference check, cost of drug test. I mean, really being able to give us a feel when we lose somebody, it costs us X amount of dollars on average to be able to replace them. And that's something I would like us to be able to track on an annual basis. And my hope is that as we explore more automated processes, that we can move that cost down. But it's a real cost. It's an important cost, I think, for us to consider as we look at different tactics. Then my other question that I'd like to get from you, and again, it doesn't have to be right now, is if we track how long an employee stays with the city after they participate in the tuition reimbursement. Counsel, for counsel's benefit, but Crystal knows, this has kind of been a sticking point with me, is that if we're going to invest in our employees' education, I hope that the taxpayers get a return for that investment. Ideally, to grow professionally within the city. What we don't want is to create an opportunity for them to grow in their education and profession and then leave the city. So, getting a sense of how our taxpayers are being reimbursed for that would be beneficial.
Thank you, Councilmember Kavanagh. We absolutely will take the time to research that information and get it back out to all of you. Thank you.
If I'm just going to, I would like to at least put some perspective into at least that component. The thing that I think that you can't necessarily tell, especially in today's market where you do have the younger people who are so transitional, what is the cost if they stay here for two additional years while they're going to school or three additional years as compared to replacing that position? So, while there may be a cost that we can look at in terms of what you see, but if it's a retention tool to keep employees for two, three, or four years, I think there's a high value in that that should not be overlooked either.
Mr. Mayor, pardon me.
That's McKavner.
I don't disagree with you at all. I think that's where, I think my first question was about, what's it cost us to lose somebody? I think that it's not, those are not two issues that are in a vacuum. I think they very much support each other. And what I appreciate is, this last year, the budget, HR came to us, the previous mayor came to us, these are investments that they need to see from the city in order to be able to not just recruit, but to retain. And I just want to make sure that, like, everything that we spend on that we're being able to at least see what that return is. And if it is only for a year, maybe we're working to try and extend that to 18 months. If it's 18 months, maybe we're trying to extend that to 24 months. We obviously want to keep those people here as long as possible. I agree.
Counsel, any other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselwoman Borden.
Not a question, but just a comment. We talk about the expense of a growing city. You listed such a long compilation of activities that HR is critical to infrastructure, which we all know, but this is just a great reminder of the important role that your entire department and team play in making the city successful, and it is part of that infrastructure that we've got to continue to maintain. So, I appreciate the reminder of all the good work you're doing.
Thank you, Councilmember Borden.
All right. Thank you, Crystal. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Up next, item 5C. You all will have the benefit of having the personnel policy training. All the other employees are wrapping up. I don't know what our percentage is of other employees, but I hope you enjoy this presentation by Christina.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I am here to do the ICRAMP training that all of the other city employees have had the great pleasure of participating in. So, I'm going to hand around this sign-in sheet if you can sign it.
Mr. Mayor, while she's doing that, is this an open book test or anything? Or do we have to?
I don't know. I might have to put you on the spot.
There is some off-after other training that you will need to do that is, that you do need to pass from that standpoint, if you've not already done that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, so ICRAMP is the risk management provider for the city. Lots of local agencies, counties, special districts, and things like that participate in this risk management pool. Every year, they roll out a discount program that the city participates in. We get 100 percent participation, and we receive a discount on our premium to them. And Crystal touched on that briefly. It was roughly $17,000 last year. So typically, each year, we do driver safety in-person topics, but the employee relation claims have succeeded those auto accidents. So, they've asked me to come in front of you and do a personnel policy review. Additionally, Crystal will be sending out an email with a link. ICRAMP has a new website this year, so if you have logged into it previously, you will need to create a new username and password. But once you log in, you will have access to the personnel policies themselves, and will need to acknowledge that you understand them, know where to ask questions, know where to find them, and then participate in a cybersecurity training, which is approximately 20 minutes long. You do have to take a test at the end. You do have to get 100 percent. We cannot see how many times you've taken it, so you can take it as many times as you need, but it should take approximately 20 minutes, and then this in-person piece as well. So, for this in-person piece, ICRAMP has asked me to cover a couple of policies, so I'll just jump right in. Employee classification. So, every employee in the City of Meridian is classified in one of the following categories: regular full-time, regular part-time, temporary seasonal, appointed official, department director, department head, elected official, union employee, or an independent contractor. Additionally, we also identify between exempt and non-exempt employees. So, an exempt employee is salaried, not overtime-eligible. Non-exempt is hourly and overtime-eligible. Standards of conduct. So, this policy outlines the things that we would like to see in the workplace, those behaviors and actions that are helpful to our workplace. So, the provides the ability to provide excellent, excuse me, I can't speak tonight, customer service to the public and maintain good community relations. It depends on our city employees. Employees are expected to conduct themselves in a professional and courteous manner at all times, to carry out their responsibilities in the most effective and efficient way possible, and to exhibit a high degree of integrity at all times. Additional expectations through this policy are that all employees abide by department rules, the state of Idaho's Code of Ethics, perform their tasks efficiently and effectively, report to work on time. If they're not able to report to work, letting their supervisor know in advance so that they can make arrangements for that. Reporting any illness, disability, or medication that might adversely affect their ability to perform their job functions. So, the example I provide is, you get injured all of the weekend, you're prescribed a medication that inhibits your ability to safely and effectively perform your work, you need to be letting your supervisor know so that they can, again, make arrangements for that. Keep confidential information private. Keep your work environment clean and orderly. Put forth your best efforts to work harmoniously with coworkers. So, don't have to be best friends, but do have to engage in those work-related conversations to move the work forward. Extend courtesy and respect and consideration to all. Avoid conflicts of interest or using public position for personal gain. Complying with all the city's safety rules. Recognize and understand that city expressly prohibits acts or threats of violence and complying with the standards of dress which are set by each department director. Prohibited activities in the workplace. So, this policy outlines the behaviors we would rather not see in the workplace. It is not an all-inclusive list. I do have a copy of the policies. You should have those electronically as well. They are out on our intranet, but just to highlight a few violations or failing to follow safety standards, showing up for work being under the influence, insubordination, discrimination in the treatment of coworkers or members of the public, engaging in malicious gossip or rumors, abusive treatment, whether physical or verbal, to your coworkers or members of the public, making degrading comments about a person's appearance, teasing, kidding, touching, telling jokes that may be perceived as inappropriate. So, we've done most of our harassment training around the city, and in that training, we explain that it's not how you perceive it, it's how the others around you perceive it. So, just beware and cognizant of who's around you when you're having conversations. Unauthorized disclosure of confidential information from city records, unlawful discrimination or harassment of other employees, unsatisfactory performance, or the unwillingness to get along with your coworkers. Again, don't have to be best friends, don't have to go to the weekend barbecue, but you do have to have those work conversations. Failure to comply or disregard employment-related rules or policies, and engaging in abusive conduct to a fellow employee or member of the public or using abusive language. And there is a reporting method, several different methods of reporting that information, and I'll get into that in just a moment. Harassment discrimination outlines what we define as harassment here at the city. Really, there are two workplace harassment categories. There is sexual harassment, and then harassment that creates an intimidating or hostile work environment. There is also a distinguishing, distinguishing, oh, I can't say that word, at any rate, between what is uncomfortable in the workplace and then what is actually unlawful. So, the actions or things that are exhibited that actually cross that line to unlawful are, is if it's a determiner or condition of your employment, if it's made for an employment decision, or the purpose or effect substantially interferes with an individual's ability to do their work, creating an intimidating or hostile work environment. The methods in which employees or yourselves can report these behaviors that are exhibited in the workplace, and you actually have a duty as a city employee to do that, is through their immediate supervisor, the department director, or any other director of the city, human resources, the mayor, or we do have what's called the compliance line, so it's an 800 number, or you can log in online. You can report using your name, or you can report anonymously through those methods. We do take these concerns and complaints serious if they're received through any of those reporting avenues. We do look into those matters. Sometimes, it's an internal investigation through Human Resources. Other times, we contract out to a third party, just depending on the situation and the individuals involved. Through that process, we do maintain as much confidentiality as possible. There is a certain amount of information that does have to be shared, but it is on a need-to-know basis. And then we do not tolerate retaliation. So, if someone brings forward a complaint or is part of an investigation and feels like they're being retaliated against, or another employee witnesses that, we do ask that they file a complaint or air that concern so that we can look into that matter. The next policy is disciplinary action. So, reasons, we may go down a disciplinary path or violation of a policy or procedure, unacceptable behavior in the workplace, workflow impact, or substandard performance. We do have steps of progressive discipline here at the city. So, first, we try counseling and coaching, verbal-written warning, which is kept at the department level, written warning, which is forwarded to the Human Resources Department and becomes part of a personnel file, demotion, a performance improvement plan, also known as a PIP, suspension, and termination. And I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Christina. Counsel, do you have any questions on this training? Well, we appreciate your time, and you are now in compliance, so we...
May I ask who has the sign-in sheet? Oh, awesome.
Thank you. All right. Up next is item 5D, Public Works with a Solid Waste 101, presented by Tom, and with this, this is from Emma, I believe.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm going to be taking you through a quick introduction of our solid waste program throughout the city. This is in response to the request from council about kind of getting a little more insight into what is our solid waste program and what it's all about. So, I'd like to start off just by introducing the rest of the solid waste department. Come up here and stand with me. You can see them all behind me here. Oh, nope, just me. Entirety of your solid waste department is right in front of you. Some things we're going to be going over tonight are some of the key players in the solid waste business in Meridian, our current program, what are our disposal options, what are our rates and how do they get made, our contract and franchisee, our education and outreach program, and then the future of our solid waste program. So, what is solid waste? You can see up there on your screen, you've got our code definition of what is solid waste. Feel free to read that whole thing if you want to. I won't really get into it with you, but just keep in mind, solid waste is trash and recyclable material, construction debris, things like that, that people want removed that our contract franchisee picks up. And who makes solid waste? Everyone. You do, I do, the city does, all the homes do, schools do, churches do, businesses do. Everyone makes solid waste. But how much of that waste do we make? Well, we're looking at residential curbside numbers from 2019. Curbside is our most visible trash thing that people tend to have the most questions about. As you can see, it's about 158 million pounds of trash picked up curbside, about 14 million pounds of recycling picked up curbside, a little more than a million pounds of grass and leaves, and about 38,000 pounds of glass. To dive into those numbers just a little more deeply, if you, this is a graph of our total residential trash tons collected curbside by month. See, we average about 4,500 tons a month collected. If you look at that graph, you'll see there's a little bit of seasonality in there because we have organics in our trash system. When things don't grow, you know, around January, December, February, that area, it's a little bit of a downturn. a little bit of a downturn in tons collected, and then as things grow, it gets up a little bit more. If you're going on to a per household average, the average household puts out about 259 pounds per month, which averages out to about a ton per household per year, which is right on par with the national average, so we're right where we should be. And again, you'll see that seasonality trend. When we get into recycling, you'll see it's, there's still a bit of seasonality, but it's a little bit more of an even keel on the graph. We're averaging about 383 total tons collected per month. You'll see a big spike in January, it tends to be right after the holidays, people are getting rid of a little bit more stuff, and they just have a few more things to recycle. If you're getting into our per household average, it's about 24 pounds per household per month. That's due to the fact that, well, in many cases, recycling is quite a bit lighter, tends to take up a little bit more space, and it just, and it's only half, it's only collected half as often. So when we're speaking about our services, what are the current services that we do offer? We offer a weekly trash collection curbside, we have the bi-weekly recycling collection, we also have a paper collection on bulk items, if people have items that can't fit in their trash container and they want to have a way to get them picked up, that is a service that is offered at an additional fee. And we also have a paper collection on appliances. We collect both free-on and non-free-on appliances at an additional cost as well. In addition to our services that are just kind of fallen under utility bill, we also have a couple of subscription services that are standalone services billed through our contracted franchisee, Republic Services. Our first one is curbside grass collection. Currently, it's a grass-only collection. It operates April through October. In November, people can use their grass cart to pick up, to put their leaves in as well so they don't have to buy those craft paper bags for leaf collection. We're averaging about 283 accounts a month throughout the year 2019. They averaged about 1,084 setouts per month. It's a once-a-week service, and it ended up with about 49 tons of grass collected. We also have a subscription glass service that can also be a curbside program. Throughout 2019, we averaged about 154 accounts per month, though that number tended to go up and down. People kind of realized they could consolidate down, and one glass cart could serve multiple houses. It's a once-every-four-week collection, so you see the setouts are significantly lower than for, say, a once-a-week collection at about 82. And they averaged about one ton of glass collected curbside per month. With the glass collection, we also have an option for people to drop glass off at the Republic Services transfer station on Franklin. That averaged about 11 tons of glass collected per month, and for a total glass collection tonnage of about 132 tons in 2019. People also can participate in the optional Dow Energy Bag Program, which is a good landfill diversion opportunity. Our program runs in agreement with the city of Boise, so we do not have a direct agreement with Dow. We have an agreement with the city of Boise, and it's a voluntary program at no additional charge to the residents of the city. So who are some of the key solid waste players that are actually operating in the city or paramount to our success? Well, you have the county of Ada in which we reside. They own and operate the landfill, and that's where our waste goes after it goes through the transfer station. We have Republic Services, who is our contracted service provider. We have a pretty good partnership with them. They do all of our collection services for us. You have Western Recycling, they operate the Material Recovery Facility, or MRF, where all recyclable material collected in the Treasure Valley goes. It's all processed there, it's all sort of there for processing elsewhere. And then you have Hardened Sanitation, who is, who has recently been awarded the Ada County, the unincorporated Ada County Collection Contract, and they're headquartered right here in the city of Meridian. But I would say our biggest, most important player would be our City Solid Waste Advisory Commission, also known as our SWAC. Their big job is to review and make recommendations to you, the council, on the rate requests from our franchisee, new program development, program direction, really anything that might require a decision to be made. They're comprised of Meridian residents and industry experts. They meet on the fourth Wednesday of each month, and they have a couple of events that they do annually. They participate in our recycle bicycle event, which is a part of the Unplug and Get Outside, and they have the Trash or Treasure Event, which immediately precedes our Unlimited Collection Week in the spring. Where does our material go once it gets collected? Well, we've got a few disposal options now. The Ada County landfill, obviously, that's where all the trash goes that gets collected. It's consolidated at the transfer station, heads up to the landfill. We also have Western Recycling, as previously mentioned, where all our recyclable material goes. And our glass all goes to Momentum Recycling, which is the biggest glass recycler in the country out in Salt Lake. As many of you are very aware, the landfill tipping fee rates are going up a bit. Currently, they're $22 a ton. As of October 1st, 2020, they will be $29 a ton. That resolution was voted on and approved last month by the county of Ada. That is a direct pass-through cost that will have a direct impact on our actual rates themselves due to, per our contract. Right now, we don't know exactly what that's going to be. For a limit, back-of-the-napkin math says probably between 65 and 68 cents per resident per month, but I don't have exacts on that yet. We'll have those shortly. And we also know that the daily landfill operations, known as push and pack, actually moving the material and packing it, is up for RFP. That's been awarded by Ada County. As of now, I'm not sure who was that, who that has been awarded to, so I can't tell you what impact that may have on rates, but it could and might not if the rates stay the same. Speaking of rates, where do our rates sit? Well, just like geographically, we're right in the middle of the Treasure Valley in our rates. There's four municipalities above us in costs, and there's four that are below us. Our rates currently $19.78 per month for our 95-gallon trash service at the curb. We also have our two subscription services. You'll see there are a couple cities that have unlimited service, so they don't really have a lot in the way of subscription services, because you can just put out anything they want to, and really any condition they want to. And if you look at Eagle and Star on that, you'll see that they currently have unlimited service, but they're working, their councils are actually working right now to limit what can be put out for service, so they're putting bag limits out or material limits out on what can be collected. So what makes up our rates? Well, there's really six things that make up our rates. There's trash service, which is actually the vehicle going to your house and picking up your cart. There's recycle service, there are two separate ones, obviously, two different trucks going to your house. We have a separate contract amendment known as the recycle processing fee, which some of you voted on in the past. We also have the participation in the countywide household hazardous waste program, which is where that collection is, at the transfer station every Monday. We have cart rent, there is tax on that rent, and then we have the direct disposal cost, the cost to actually get that material to the landfill. Those are broken down as follows. Our trash service is $8.26 a month, recycle service 413, our recycle processing fee of 83 cents, household hazardous waste at 18, rented $1.12, disposal $4.76, and taxes 7 cents. If you do that math, you're going to get 2019's rate. The increases on the side were how those rates actually went up when the rate request came through. So our rate request is based on a CPI index, where our franchisee can request up to a certain amount of that CPI index as the cost of doing business increases. So there's a 20 cent increase on trash service, 10 on recycling, 10 on that recycle processing fee, which is not CPI, that is a separate amendment, and then a CPI increase of 3 cents, which got us to that $19.78 rate, that is our effective as of October 1. We have three different service options, so people aren't stuck with just that rate. We have a 95-gallon service, that's 1978. We have 65-gallon service, that's 1778, and we have 35-gallon service at 1578. What causes those rate increases? As I kind of talked about, we do have that CPI aspect of the contract where the franchisee is allowed to request an increase based on what the CPI is, but there are a couple factors outside of that. Because of some of what's been going on with the recycle markets, it's been more expensive to process recycling, so our franchisee has asked for that increase in recycle processing. The household hazardous waste cost, as the county one program, as more material goes through that, it can cost more, but that can also go down depending on the amount of material processed and the direct cost to the county. And then just the cost of disposal itself, if landfill gate rates or wherever we're dumping our material go up, that is a direct pass-through cost. Getting on to the subject of contract, our contract was signed in 1999. The company was originally SSI, it became SSC shortly thereafter. We added source-separated curbside recycling in the year 2000. Our contract has a seven-year notice of cancellation period, so if we were to cancel, to request cancellation of the contract today, it would still be valid for seven more years after that. It has an auto-renew clause, so if nothing changes, the contract just continues in perpetuity. And our contract was transferred to Republic Services in 2012, when they purchased SSC. On the topic of our franchisee, though, we do have a pretty good working relationship with our franchisee. They tend to partner with us on city events, they do some sponsorships of things like Public Works Week and other, and other events. They do donate prizes like those trucks you'll see on the screen for things like our Trash Talk Facebook page and just other little one-off events that we have. And they also participate in some of our events like Public Works Week. That bottom picture you'll see is a truck that they actually bring to the Public Works Week Expo to let people get up close and kind of see what a garbage truck is like. They also have been working to convert their diesel fleet to a CNG fleet to really lessen the environmental impact of actually collecting the trash curbside, and they're currently working, I'm not sure if it started it, but they're working with our wastewater division to use reclaimed water for bin washing and irrigation at their transfer station. On the topic of our franchisee, well, how are they doing? Well, this is our misses-per-10,000 collection. That's a pretty good indicator of how, how the franchisee is doing. There's not a national average on misses-per-10,000, because it really can vary quite a bit, but this is the most common way that it's measured. And if you look at August, that's the highest month of misses-per-10,000. Those are reported misses when people say, hey, my trash wasn't picked up and they need to come back. Even in the worst month of August, there was still a 99.6% chance that your trash at the curb was serviced at the right day at the right time. So I would say they're doing pretty well in the trash worm. And this is our recycling misses-per-10,000. See a big spike in October? I cannot tell you why that spike occurred, but I can tell you that even in that pretty big spike, there was still a 99.73% chance that your recycling is going to get picked up on the right day at the right time. So even slightly better than our trash success rate, which is still a very good rate of service. If for some reason trash can't be picked up, our franchisee does have what are called hard cards that they can put on the cart to educate the resident as to why the material couldn't be picked up. There's three, three columns essentially that we put that into, that the trash was either not out or was late, and it set out when the driver went by, it was blocked by something, car, tree, too close to something, or there was material, extra material outside the car or on top of the cart that limited their ability to pick it up. You'll see from the graph below for trash, the most common reason is that the customer doesn't have their cart out when the truck comes by to get it picked up. So they, that's the kind of that first piece of outreach that the franchisee has to let people know what's going on. In recycling, there's even more of a big jump between late and not out and everything else. With recycling being about half as often, people tend to forget that a little bit more. I'm sure Mr. Kavner knows sometimes you forget to put it out the night before, and you, you definitely, oftentimes you can catch the driver in time. As far as our level of education, our city has a very, our Public Works Department trash in particular has a very robust social media presence. We use that a lot to reach out to people. It's a very straightforward way of getting a lot of people to get a very succinct amount of information. We also do live presentation events to specific groups and different things. I myself have done a presentation on just the topic of recycling to MIAC last year. We have Facebook Live events for one-offs. We've kind of expanded our Trash Talk page. It started out as just an orange bag education for that energy bag program. It's expanded to, in anything solid waste, new programs, new opportunities, existing programs, what are the rules, what do I do, cart placement, really anything you can think of, we're trying to put in there to really increase that education and make everyone more successful in what we're doing. We're currently working to develop an education program to be able to take out to schools and other groups that would like more education on solid waste, to kind of develop a more defined curriculum and see what people need to be able to continue to expand that education. And as things change, we're updating where we put what on the website within our, within our section to make sure that it's easier for people to find and understand what they need. So where are we going? So we talked about a whole bunch of things, our key players, our current programs, our disposal options, rates, contracts, and everything, and we're using those kind of six pillars that we talked about to try to develop a solid waste plan, a one, five, and 10-year goal plan to really steer, steer solid ways to where we want it to go, where you want it to go in the future. So right now, our SWAC subcommittee is working with myself to really build that plan, determine what the pillars are exactly, what falls into those pillars, and the direction we'll go. So we'll be coming back to you after we get that developed for feedback and say, hey, is this the direction we should go? Is this how we want to do it? Are there particular things you'd like to concentrate on a little bit more? We're also continuing to look at what are all of our disposal options. We know what our current disposal options are, but are there different programs or things that will be developed with the Greensword or just in the future that could be beneficial to the residents in Meridian? And then as a big part of that, we're also working on developing that education program like I mentioned. And with that, I will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Tom. Appreciate it very much. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holgland.
I'm just curious, Tom, glass recycling, you said they're going to the largest entity now in the country. Where does that glass go and what it's being used for?
Currently, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Holgland. It's currently going to Momentum Recycling in Salt Lake City, and it's actually getting turned into fiberglass insulation.
Okay, great, thanks, because I've seen in media reports that some of it was just building up somewhere, and I thought certainly we're, we're using it somehow. And Mr. Mayor, a follow-up question. Yard waste collection, non-grass, are there any plans in the future to be, going into that area, or what should I tell my wife what she should do with all her stuff?
Currently, it's a, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Holgland, currently it is a grass-only collection program. It does go, the location that goes to is, has finished permitting for a composting site. They've brought some information to SWAC that's currently under review. So I can't tell you where it will go, but I know that they're looking to possibly make some changes. And before anything happened, it would come to you anyway.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, just to defend my wife, she's a master gardener, she creates a lot of yard waste. I have a composting deal that I do, but she generates more than I can take care of, so I look forward to seeing what we can do in the future. Councilman Scherer?
Yeah, just a quick update as the liaison for the SWAC. The discussion on expanding a potential composting program is definitely underway, and I think we're going to be hearing more about that soon. There's quite a bit of consideration that goes into that, and it's all going to be part of the solid waste plan, I believe, so I think we just have to stay tuned for more detail. But I share your concern about yard waste, my composting, my home composting program is also at capacity.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Pearl.
Could you give us an update on the orange bag program? I was under the understanding that the company in Salt Lake that was processing that had had to shut down to their facility for some time, and it was just being stored. What's the current status?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Pearl, currently, yes, renewalogy is down for upgrades. I don't really have a lot of information other than that. I know the material. Dow is currently exploring other secondary markets for what they can do and storing material at the same time. I don't have a timetable currently for when renewalogy will be back up. However, we do have a representative from Dow, the orange bag program, who will be speaking to our solid waste advisory commission on the 25th of March at their, at their March meeting. So I would strongly, if you have any questions you'd like me to share with them, or if you'd like to attend, they will be speaking at SWAC, and they'd be able to more accurately answer those for you.
Mr. Mayor, a follow-up question.
Councilwoman Pearl.
So is, are those, is all of that still being collected and then stored in, at their facility there, or are we storing it here in Meridian?
It's still getting collected, just as normal. I think most of it's, I can't say for certain, so I'll be postulating a little bit, but I think it's being stored at Western Recycling right now, or at other, or at the renewalogy facility, but I can't tell you that for certain. That'd be much better answered by Dow, but it's definitely still getting collected as normal.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Kavner.
Love it when my colleagues touch on the questions I was going to ask about. Fantastic. I did have a couple more, and it kind of dovetails a little bit as our conversation about composting. It's about the grass collection program, and this is something that when it was announced, I was really excited about, and it seems like every year we have lower and lower participation. And so I don't know if SWAC is having that conversation about maybe as composting is something that we look to explore, what we can do to breathe some new life into that program. I recognize like glass, it's an optional program. It was one that I struggled to be able to participate with as a customer. It frustrated me, quite frankly. I want to support it. I want it to be a success in our community, and from what I hear from a lot of our citizens, they want it too. But if there's an opportunity maybe for SWAC to work with, with Republic to figure out how they can kind of improve that program to serve our citizens better, as, as we're also having that conversation about, about composting. And then I guess it's more of a comment more than a question, but my other question was, I got asked this the other night, and I didn't have the answer. How come our citizens can't buy their recycling bins or their trash bins? I know that there's frustration when they see their, their statement each month, they're paying a few bucks for rent, and they would say, boy, if I could just buy my own, I'd like to be able to do that. Is there a reason why our citizens can't purchase them?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Kavner, there's a couple, that's a multi-part answer I'll have to give you. So part of it, the reason they're paying for the rent is so if anything happens to the container, it gets damaged or stolen, they don't have to pay anything to get a new one. It just comes in automatically. If you're, if you get a hole in the side of your cart, let Republic know, they'll swap it out. You won't even know, they'll pick it up, they'll give you a new one right after service. I believe, and I'll have to verify this, so I'll have to get back to you on it, but I believe if people want to purchase a cart and they purchase one that's compatible with the collection vehicles, they can sign a personal cart waiver and be able to use that, but I'll have to verify that one with our franchisee before I tell you that's a certainty.
That'd be great to hear that back. And that would be great information to be able to pass along is that our citizens actually do have an option about what they'd want to do.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Scherer.
Just a comment, at least from the conversations I have heard so far, that the, a potential composting program in the future would be an expansion of the grass collection program was how the Gallup Republic Services explained it. And so the beauty of that would be like, it sounded like it could be an all-year-round type of service where you could hopefully hit multiple categories because I'm kind of with you, right? If it's just one thing or just grass and just leaves, it's hard to justify the cost, I think, for the consumer. But I think that the, at least from the thoughts I had heard, the preliminary thoughts I had heard about a program sounded like it could become, you know, something more comprehensive.
Counsel, any further questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
So up next is item 5E from our police department. It'll be a discussion of Meridian City Code related to nuisance tree abatement. It'll be presented by Mr. Everett.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thanks for giving me time to come before you today. Each of you has received a proposed amendment and repeal document that applies to our city code, specifically chapters, our title four and 13. And the driving force behind this is to just allow for better administration of our city code and consistency and to create appropriate due process. Our current code prohibits code enforcement officers from handling nuisances that are trees. The original responsibility was placed upon the city arborist long before there was ever a code enforcement division to handle those types of things. So title 13 is the only option that the city has when they're dealing with the nuisance tree. And the nuisance tree might be a tree that presents a public danger. It's ready to fall into a roadway, it's diseased or it's already dead or parts of it are falling off or it has encroached into a right of way, it's lifting a sidewalk, it's creating some type of hazard. And right now, the arborist is charged with handling all of those nuisances. And the main problem in that is the due process that's afforded to the property owner or the responsible party for the tree is they can appeal to the Parks and Recs Commission. Currently, under all of our other nuisances, if a property owner would like to appeal, they appeal before this board. So consistency is the big thing that is the driving force on it. You'll have to excuse my cough. I'm sorry about that. So right now, if the appeal goes forward, we have a body that's not used to dealing with any appeals of any nature in relation to criminal events. The nuisance is a crime if the person refuses to abate that. So we're trying to streamline that and get around it and make sure that our residents are dealing with the same processes throughout across the board. And we're seeing it when we go to a property that has been reported of being the source of multiple nuisances. We deal with nine out of 10 of them, the way title four requires us to. And then we say, well, I'm sorry, sir, ma'am, but now you're going to have to talk to the arborist. And I'd really like to streamline that and make sure we're the one point of service for the community. So we're educating them and we're able to provide that service without giving them the runaround. The changes would completely eliminate title 13, section one. Title 13, section one is the forestry code and it would be replaced by title 13, section two, which would outline the arborist duties and responsibilities, but not have them take charge of nuisance trees. So we're not trying to get away from using the expert advice of the arborist. The arborist would still be encouraged to provide his or her input anytime they would like to do so. And then my folks would also seek out the expertise of an arborist if it's not a cut and dry issue. If the tree's already fallen and it's across the street, it's a cut and dry issue. If the tree just happens to be in a three-year dormant cycle that's indicative of that species every 15 years, well, that's where we want the arborist to come in. But we don't want to bug the arborist with every single decision. So the change would make a nuisance tree an abatable nuisance, meaning in our code we have general nuisances and we have abatable nuisances. The abatable nuisances are defined as those things that we of the city have decided that these need to be taken care of immediately. And if the responsible party does not take care of them, then we will take care of it via our own means or hiring a contractor to come in and take care of that. And then the property owner or the person responsible for the nuisance would be charged for doing that. So there's a few things that can make a tree an abatable nuisance. And if it constitutes a public safety hazard, the arborist deems that the condition of the tree presents a danger to life and enjoyment of a property, it can become a nuisance. If it obstructs free traffic on a sidewalk or a street, it's a nuisance. Or if it doesn't provide eight feet above a sidewalk or 14 feet above, excuse me, 14 feet above a street, then it also becomes a nuisance. And there are abatement measures that would be incorporated in this amendment that would either require the tree to be pruned or its branches to be removed, removal of debris, roots, root systems or stumps, or soil displaced by the growth of the tree, or as a last resort, removal of the entire tree. It's not our goal to move throughout the city and start saying we need to remove that tree, we need to remove that tree. That's going to be our last resort. We noticed that, or we recognize that we live in a beautiful place and a lot of that beauty comes from the trees we have. So we've worked hand in hand with legal and Parks and Rec folks to make sure that we're in agreement on this and getting input from our outgoing arborist and our incoming arborist to make sure that we're not missing anything. So the legal department, the police department, the Parks and Recs department, we all support this change. I'll stand for your question.
Thank you, Rich. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pearl.
Would this, how, two questions. One, about how many of these concerns or violations are you seeing a year? And then the second question is, will this apply to commercial, residential and any entities in between? So irrigation districts, any, you know, the companies that manage along the railroad? Tell us who this would apply to and how that would work.
Sure, Mr. Mayor and Councilwoman Pearl. The first part of your question is, it's hard to answer hard numbers on how many we're handling because a lot of the, a lot of the initial complaints come in through parks because folks associate trees with parks. So they're calling in and they're reporting to parks. So we don't have a total number or a grasp of how many are they're coming in because they're coming in across the board because we don't have that consistency and we don't have an educational campaign to let folks know, hey, if you have a problem, please call us. But we're a ballpark figure, we're handling three or four of them a month where we are telling folks, we're telling our residents, I'm sorry, this isn't anything we can help you with. And then we're routing them to another city department. And that's the last thing I want my folks doing is sending it somewhere else. I want them to handle everything they can that comes to us to just provide the better service to our resident. And then the second question, it would be all trees within the city of Meridian and answer who it will impact the most or who, like you mentioned, irrigation districts or railroads, property lines and responsibility is difficult to determine and it's very much case by case. The overwhelming application or rule that fits most cases is the adjacent property owner out to the center of the right of way, so the center of the street. If it's from the center of the street toward their property, it's their responsibility. That's not hard and fast in every situation, but that's where we start and then we figure out if it's going to stick. You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pearl.
Rich, you're doing a hell of a job, buddy.
Thank you, sir.
You really are. You and your team should be commended for all, what you're doing. So good job. Got one question for you. If a citizen is charged for work that we do or a third party does, how are they charged? Or how are they, how do we collect the money?
So it would be much like nuisance weeds right now. If we have to hire a contractor to come in and abate that nuisance, it's the cost of the contractor's time, whatever they bill the city. And then there's a $100 administration fee that gets added to that to ensure the processing and my folks' time and payroll's time and MUB's utility billing.
So it goes to MUBs?
It eventually goes to MUBs, yes. And then if they don't pay, then there is a lien process. So that's the financial side of it. And then there's a criminal side of it. If they refuse to comply, then it goes to prosecution.
Perfect. Thanks, Rich.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Scherer.
Thank you very much. This seems pretty straightforward to me, but I did want to check, does the property owner have an opportunity to remediate the situation themselves before this escalates into charging them to do something?
Mr. Mayor and Councilwoman Scherer, absolutely. Our goal is compliance. Our goal is never to just outright come and tell someone, hey, we're sending this to court. We work tirelessly with property owners to develop a compliance plan and it's all based on reasonableness. We have no hard and fast date. If you can show me progress or you can explain a hardship or you can show me something that is reasonable for me to believe you that, hey, you need more time, we're going to work with you. And, you know, sometimes we get exposed to some folks who just cannot come into compliance, whether their age or their physical limitations or things like that come into play. And then we have a network of community outreach groups that we reach out to and we're always, always, always trying to find a solution without prosecution. Very few of our cases ever actually go to prosecution because of that approach.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Thanks. Rich, a couple of questions. So we are a few weeks or months away from pear tree season. These trees, to quote the definition, offend my senses. Does that mean if we pass this that I get to call you guys to go bug my neighbor about their stinky trees?
Not at all. You can call me and you can complain about the sticky tree or the stinky tree, but it's not going, in that situation, it's not going to meet the criteria for the nuisance. It's not creating a public hazard. Maybe if you had an extreme case, we'd have to look into it, but case by case. But it won't allow folks to just start deeming their tree, their neighbor's tree, a nuisance.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Great follow-up, if I may. Great. I worry a little bit about the definition piece where it talks about offending the senses and, you know, a car not being parked in the right place, that's pretty black or white. What offends me might not offend somebody else. And so I'm a little hesitant about that. And then the other kind of follow-up to that is, you know, when we go and do abatement on weeds, we fix it or we solve the problem and then if I understand, then the citizen can come and essentially say, I don't want to have to pay for this. And I worry a little bit, will the process involve cutting down a tree? And at that point, there's not necessarily the way to replace the tree. Do you get what I'm saying? So I just, I didn't see the process, the due process line here, nor what I expected, but I just was hoping you could maybe expand on that a little bit further.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Councilman Cavanagh, I can answer the first part. If you can clarify me where you're reading in the code about the senses, offending the senses. I think you might be reading nuisance specific and not nuisance tree specific definition.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I can correct, I'm reading nuisance and then below it lays the nuisance conditions. And so I guess when I read nuisance, I say anything which unreasonably injures or offends the health or senses. So to me, that's, I hate the smell of those dang pear trees, man, let me tell you. And so to me, that, I just, and I say that kind of, you know, tongue in cheek, but that does appear to be a little arbitrary for me. And so I don't, I don't know if we can get any explanation as to why that piece is in there, if it's beneficial, if that part's removed.
Sure, Mr. Mayor and Councilman Cavanagh. If you look at, the part you're referencing is the actual definition of a general nuisance. And a nuisance tree is defined on page three. You'll look in the top third of the page, it says nuisance tree. And then it lists what constitutes a nuisance tree. The definition that you're referring to is the general nuisance. And if it's an odor that offends, usually that tends to lead us to discover the piling of animal feces that's not being removed and things of that nature. But the nuisance tree would not fall into the sense, the sense category.
Okay.
Defensive sense.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Mr. Mayor, thanks. I get that piece. I guess on page two, right below, at the top page, you have B, C and D, and then nuisance is defined. And then at the end of that, it says, without limitation, the following nuisance conditions. So I guess as I read that, and we've got smarter legal minds here than I do, nuisance, and then it lists nuisance weeds, graffiti on any surface, snow or ice, vegetation and nuisance trees, that all of those seem to me apply to the word nuisance that's defined above that specifically relates to, and again, maybe I'm being too much of a stickler on this. I just, I don't want to create a scenario where, quite frankly, you guys deal a lot with neighborhood issues that they look for issues, reasons to call you guys to get involved. And we've heard a lot about wanting to not impact the workload on you guys and I don't want neighbors fighting over stinky trees.
Sure.
If I could have Mr. Neri kind of reply to that, since he seems to be the legal mind that wants to be smarter than everybody else right now.
So, thank you, Mr. Cavanagh. So as Rich stated, the specific definition of nuisance tree doesn't include odor. That's what a court's going to evaluate is what's the specific definition, not the general. The general overall definition is nuisances in general, but then when you define them specifically and identify what is a nuisance tree, it is only ones that are basically a hazard. So a call about a smelly tree is not a nuisance tree. Could it be rotting vegetation? Could it be something else? Potentially, yes. They have tree debris in their yard that has now created a different type of nuisance, but it's not a nuisance tree. So the specific will always trump the general. And so that's why it's separated out.
And there was a second part to your question.
Just, Mr. Mayor, just maybe even just helping us, how many, how many trees a year you guys, is the arborist cutting down? I mean, are we talking about one a year, two a year? I don't know, Mike's here, I thought I saw Mike. I don't know if he's got any insight on this.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh. We've probably cut down two or three in the last 10 years.
Okay. That's good enough for me. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I can also add to that. I mean, we get a lot of compliance. I mean, between both the Parks Department, the arborist and code when appropriate, we get a lot of public compliance there. So that's why we haven't had to do it very often. We've probably cut more weeds than we've cut down trees.
Thanks.
Are there any further questions from counsel? Is there anybody that would like to provide some direction on this item? Would you like to see it come back before you?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holgland.
Yeah, I understand Rich's argument that it makes sense to move this to a more consistent place for code enforcement because it is an enforcement matter and understanding that he works with the arborist, city arborist and the Parks Department on picking out those trees and making the right decisions, I think it makes sense to move that.
I seem to be getting general head nods, so if we want to put this on a future agenda and bring it back?
We'll put it on next week.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rich.
Thanks, Rich.
All right, counsel, it is 6 o'clock. We talked about taking a break, but since most of the people in the room, I think you're here for this next item. I think we're going to try to get through before we go to executive session unless this goes down a really long rabbit hole. I'll go ahead and kick this off and we have Mr. Miles here as well as Mr. Hood to help in this conversation. But back in January, we talked about when, after the comp plan was finished, we had a conversation about growth priority areas. At that point in time, I came back and mentioned to counsel that I thought that at the city level, we could take a first stab at the growth priority area conversation. So what you're about to have Mr. Miles kind of walk you through is just a view, representation of what we've kind of looked at, which basically entails looking at our current services that we provide, including our fire, five-minute response time as a key, sewer sheds, to help identify the areas that we believe could or should be future priority growth areas. And what this, we'll talk about this at the second conversation after I have Dave kind of walk you through some elements of it. But this is, you know, absent looking at where we plan to put in services or new facilities, that will also, I think, highlight this even further. But the one thing I would kind of start off with and hopefully that we could all agree is enclave parcels would be the number one priority growth areas for the city of Meridian. If we already surround it, they already have police, fire, access, sewer, water, that those areas make the most sense. So I actually had him remove all of those off the map because it would just, your attention would be drawn to all the areas that we still have on infill from that standpoint. But I was hopeful that we wouldn't have to have a conversation that that should not be number one priority to encourage growth and development in terms of infill for our community.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Scherer.
I think I'm tracking with the logic. The only thing I would say is I would hope that when we're articulating our priority growth areas, that we'll add the areas that are infill back in, just so that there's a message to everyone in the community about, you know, hey, downtown, for example, downtown is clearly a priority growth area and that that'll become part of the process. So we're just really talking about the sticking points right now.
Yeah. Well, what we have not done in this conversation, we not gone and looked, I know there was a, a, a council, some may want to get very specific about a very specific infill priority growth area. We're, we're not at that level of the conversation. This is big picture, 90,000 feet. So that's what you're going to hear from us today. And this is just to meant to get the conversation moving, get general feedback on it. I know there was a desire to, for us to talk to the school district, the ACHD. Those steps have not happened. So this was just phase one, blush one. Um, it, it really, to me, shows what we already knew before we even did this exercise. But hopefully by you seeing it on a map, we can come to a general understanding that yes, that's what we think or believe. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dave, um, to walk us through.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council members. Um, so as Robert spoke, we've got a, we've got a map. And to Councilwoman Schrader's point, there are numerous layers and this might be a bit of a working discussion. We can turn things on and off, but to the mayor's point, we tried to make it simple to start with so we could clearly see some, some sort of key takeaways, um, on areas, uh, as we move forward in the discussion. The objective really was to look at the, this map that you see here and what you've got colored right now in yellow, um, in the bright yellow, for instance, in this area up in the northwest part of the city, are areas that are an amalgamation of three criteria. One is a five-minute fire response, which we worked with the fire department to pull in. The other is whether or not there's current sewer main connectivity in that area being constructed or connected. That's compiled on top of whether or not land's been annexed. So those three criteria are what's represented in that yellow. And I'll move the map around. It's a little slow on the server, so I apologize for that. And while it uploads as we shift, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank and recognize the fire department, planning department, the IT department and public works, and particularly Doug Green in IT for spending quite a bit of time playing with these maps. They're, they're nice pictures, but there's a lot behind it. So as you see down there at the south area of, of town, you've got that sort of pale yellow. What that represents is land that's currently annexed and entitled, and that's it. So as we look at these going forward, you sort of get a sense at the basic level, without adding any additional confusion to the map, that there's areas to the south in the city, areas in the northwest, and then sort of along a, a boundary of the current edge of the city as it runs, what I'll call southeast to northwest. Those are the properties that have identified within the five-minute response, current sewer connectivity and annexed and entitled at this point in time. So I, I can pause there, uh, if you've got initial questions, because I think this is going to be a bit of a discussion more than, uh, a simple recommendation. Uh, there are additional layers that we can turn off. We've got the sewer trunk sheds that we can illustrate as to why some of these boundaries occur that way. And I'm happy to do that. But again, as the mayor stated, this is an initial conversation, understanding that with this feedback from you all, we'd then take it to the partners, development communities, school districts, highway districts, to talk to them as well and get feedback.
Mr. Mayor.
Well, if I, if I could just continue just for a few.
Sure.
Few more seconds to kind of go into a few things. So a, as the, as Dave mentioned, these three, these areas show you where we are likely to grow, regardless of what we say or do, in the, in the yellow areas, because they, they meet most of the criteria that development can come in, um, and move forward. Uh, do you want to show what was the blue areas outside of the five-minute response time?
Yeah, we can do that.
I think this is where the conversation really pivots into the, the importance. So it looks like those are the sewer sheds. Is that sewer shed?
Bear with me. That's, so that's the current area served by sewer, what you see in the, the black crosshatch? We've got...
And why that matters, I'll just kind of talk as he talks about that. I think one of the policy conversations that we would want to have is, do we allow development to occur outside of sewer shed boundaries? Those are temporary lift stations that could allow development to occur. But that, those are some of those policy conversations. If it's outside of an area of our, that we currently could grow to, do we want to do that or not? So the blue is the, the, um, kind of the important thing, I think, that we all need to be aware of. Blues are areas which are outside of the five-minute fire response time. That includes areas that are annexed and have homes, as well as a s, high school that's being built in North Meridian. I don't, um, are we, can you want to kind of go to the north as well, just so they can see that element? So you can see that area up in northwest that is also, um, kind of in that general area. And I, I think that this is where the conversation really begins in terms of where do we want to grow and why? Um, it, it's very easy for me just to sit here and say, well, we've got a fire station planned for Northwest Meridian. We have a, a police, um, precinct station planned for Northwest Meridian. We're looking at potentially doing a, a plan for those four square miles. And quite frankly, if we build that fire station, we solve a lot of issues up there in Northwest. If he turns, turns on that level, you can see that. Similarly, in South Meridian, we have area which is, as is already mentioned, has already been annexed, which is outside of the five-minute response time for fire. And it, you know, if that develop, if the people down in that area, which are pulling sewer currently, want to develop at an R4 designation, uh, they are entitled to do that with very little restrictions that the city could impose, whether you wanted to or not. So we have two extremes in our community, in the northwest and the southeast, which, uh, where we have very similar issues involving existing areas outside of a five-minute response time, the potential for growth in both of those areas. And how do we, eh, what do we, what services are we interested in providing on those areas? So with that, I will stop and let there be a conversation about this information and see where it goes.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
I'll bite a little bit. So if I'm understanding, so the, the per, if you could just explain what the purple versus the black little buildings with flags, are those sewer sheds? I guess that's a question for Dave.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Schrader, those are schools, one's existing, one's future.
Got it, thank you. And then, and then I guess the squiggly gray lines, are those the sewer trunks?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Schrader, so yes, the line here in brown is the actual sewer trunk. So this sewer shed here, this sewer shed here. These darker gray lines, if that's what you're referring to, are areas within the current sewer ability area, areas where we currently have sewer service. And we tried to capture, what does that boundary look like?
The follow-up?
Councilwoman Schrader.
Okay, so just if I'm looking at this, just to make sure I'm tracking. So if I'm looking at this, what this is sort of telling me is the, the property shaded in yellow can, can be ser, we can provide services to, we can pro, provide a good fire response time. These blue areas already have the potential because they've been annexed. Is that correct? And...
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Schrader, the, the blues areas that have been annexed and currently have sewer, but fall outside of the five-minute response.
Mm-hmm, okay, yeah. And then I guess this light yellow color here, all the way at the bottom by like Columbia. What is that signifying?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Schrader, those are areas that are currently annexed and entitled, but don't have the sewer or the five-minute response.
And so it sounds like we have a dilemma, which is that we have properties annexed and that we really can't serve yet to the degree that we would like to already in the city. And there's a, it, my understanding is that along, starting at like Black Cat, 10 Mile and moving over, that to serve those areas would require constructing a new sewer line. Is that right?
To a certain extent, yes, unless they were sewered out of shed with the temporary lift station, which can only last for so long because eventually you will eat up all the capacity in the pre, in the other upstream. But I think that's part of where this conversation ultimately goes is what is the count? If, if we set growth priority areas, um, then what is council's appetite for allowing people to grow outside of those areas? But that would be one way that that would occur.
Okay, now I think I'm following the map. Um, I, are we ready for some discussion at all?
Uh, yeah.
I, I've been pretty, uh, vocal about this. I have a real bias toward infill development, um, and strongly believe as a city that it's important for us to, um, develop especially density closer to transportation corridors and where we can provide the right level of service. It will cost our taxpayers a lot more, in my opinion, to continue sprawling outward uh, without, you know, getting that density in, in the core of the city first. So I, I would be struggling, I think, already with improving services, especially in the area all the way over by Black Cat. If the, we'd have to take a look at the numbers, but my, my bias in general is to really prioritize infill development. And it, it sounds really unfortunate that we have a school literally in the, in the middle of an area that we currently don't provide services to. I'd say that that will have to be a priority now because that decision's been made and that school's being built. But, uh, just to kick off the conversation, yeah, my, my bias is usually toward infill development in terms of where I think we should prioritize putting city resources.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Burr.
I, I wouldn't disagree with, uh, making, um, you know, enclaves or infill, uh, one of the priorities. Um, I think that's, um, logical for a lot of different reasons. I wouldn't even, I would even go as far as to say maybe give some incentives to downtown development or different enclaves or infill projects. And that's, we're getting in the weeds a little bit there, but maybe that's a conversation we can save for another day. With that said, I also think it's really important that we continue to grow in a smart way. And although infill is very important, um, where our current infrastructure is, where West Data has, doesn't have every seat filled, um, there's a lot of, you know, reasons why, you know, infill is important. However, you know, I, I think that we need, um, you know, having some priority areas in different parts of the city, whether that's, whether that's northwest or southeast or other areas, maybe by, I, I agree with Councilman or Councilwoman Schrader in saying that, uh, since Ojaihe High School is going, is, is, is being built and will open up within a year, I think that's automatically going to be a priority area. I think this, you know, when a high school's built, you're going to see houses. And you're going to see construction, both residential and commercial, it's just a given. And so, um, I don't want it, I don't want to make it, it's, it's really important that we're very upfront and honest with our development community. Um, I think we need to have expectations, um, for them. And I'm a, and I think it's important to say that we're still open for business in other parts of the city, other than infill and, and, and enclaves. And where that is, we need to discuss, but I think it's important that we don't start freaking people out with this conversation, you know, focusing on our priority growth areas as, as infill and enclaves, although important, but there's other priority growth areas as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I, I completely agree on the, on the infill discussion. I mean, that makes sense, uh, from a resources perspective. However, we have to make sure that development fits. I mean, we had one a month ago that just didn't quite fit. It was an infill and, and of course, we always reserve that right to determine exactly what goes in there. The yellow areas, um, certainly make sense. They meet criteria, five-minute fire response, annexed and entitled, water, sewer. Those are, are things that, uh, are going to run their course. I, I do have a question when it comes to the blue areas, because they've been annexed. They are, uh, uh, have water sewer, uh, capabilities, uh, but they're outside the five-minute response. Um, that I would assume, and maybe the fire chief might weigh in on this as well, that there is a cost to being outside the five-minute fire, uh, response time by, by your insurance. Your homeowner's insurance would likely be higher. What, what are the other issues that, that we have that, uh, is there anything from a city perspective that's negative to the city as opposed to just the individual homeowner in those situations? It's my question.
Mr. Mayor, uh, Councilman Hoagland, as, as far as, I think I see what you're alluding to. As far as any financial cost to the city, uh, the, the ISO rating is a key factor in that, in, in our ability to get to a fire. I think that the cost, and I'm going to sound a little sentimental, I guess, but the cost is when you have a community that expects service, at, to what level do you try and provide that service unilaterally, if you will, across the jurisdiction? Uh, the five-minute travel time is important for us for two reasons, and I'll keep this brief. I've given this presentation before. In a house fire, we have a certain amount of time to get a victim out, number one, and a certain amount of time before that fire starts to double in size within the compartment, which with that fire started. Uh, typically, that's called flashover. That, that is when it creates very dangerous situations for our firefighter standard. It's a very superheated gas that then essentially ignites and, uh, some would say it explodes, some would say it rolls over, some would say it flashes over. So on a fire, those are our two most critical things. People first, get them out, and then keep the fire contained. On the medical side, uh, there's two issues that we really focus on. One is cardiac arrest, where time is critical, uh, to get to the patient, start recirculation and administer, uh, defibrillation, shocks, drugs, et cetera, uh, to try and save a life. And that window is about five to six minutes until brain death starts to occur without interventions. Uh, the other area that we focus on is trauma. There's a, there's a golden hour rule with significant serious trauma in which we need to get them to a trauma facility. So those, those are our reasons that five minutes important. Uh, as far as the financial cost, the ISO rating, um, and we just had that rating done. Certainly within the city, in close proximity to fire stations, your rating is better than if you get further out away from a fire station. Hopefully that answered the question.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Chief, thank you. Yeah, it, it does, it's more than just a monetary cost. There is that, that physical, emotional impact. And I, and I guess that's where I think the struggle's going to be if we get a request for this particular area. How, how do you weigh that? How do you determine, it's not just a, a bottom-line dollar amount that, that we have to, have to consider, but where, if they are in a community, there are certain expectations that there will be the ability to be served to a certain level. And if they're outside of that, does that, does that absolve us when we approve that development? That going, whoa, well, you know, that's where you chose to live, but by our actions? Uh, and that's, I, that's going to be the dilemma. I, I don't have an answer for that. It's just one of those things that, uh, it's, it's hard to quantify in a dollar and cents situation, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
To that point, Mark, if, if, let's say a county sub is developed, we're the ones that are going to serve them too through the rule, correct? Whether they're, whether they're a taxpayer or county sub residents, because of our agreement with the rule, we're, we're going to send our crews out there to fight the fires.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, great question. Um, and I can say over the last two years, we have had much better integration with the county uh, in them hearing our comments and taking those seriously. I would say prior to that, not so, not so much. Chief on Journal and I are going next week to give a presentation to the county P and Z, as well as the county commissioners on growth. Uh, so I think everybody's thinking about growth right now and certainly planning for it. Uh, the county subs, typically what we've seen is maybe three, five, maybe 10 home subs. But with the growth, we want to make sure that our, our comments are heard with regards to our response time.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
I guess one thing I, I, I think would be helpful, um, would be to understand the investment that we've already made in some of the areas, right? So if I'm thinking about this the right way, like all the way down to where kind of Eagle and Lake Hazel are, we've already invested, it sounds like, in a sewer line and sewer sheds and water service. And so the fire service is a piece that's missing, but we've already made that investment as a city. So, you know, I ki, I kind of think that the sewer shed discussion is a pretty key piece of it, just because the infrastructure investment for the taxpayers, eh, I think would be pretty significant to actually go then develop that, you know, all the way over to McDermott. And that we'd have to really weigh the cost of going out there. I think that's a different conversation than an area where we've already made that significant investment. And then maybe it's a question of timing in terms of when, you know, how much it would cost us to get an additional fire station and where it could be located, um, to help us get comfortable with the fire response time before we re... get comfortable with the fire response time before we really expand out there.
And I think you've hit the nail on the head to a large extent, and that's going to largely depend upon what action the state legislature takes over the next two weeks. I've challenged our chief to say, what would it take to give me two new fire stations in North and South Meridian? And working with our finance department, quite frankly, until we know our funding model, I can't guarantee that we can produce you one, let alone two, because the ongoing operational costs are what really hurts us. So yes and yes in that context. And even to your comment, your question about the sewer investments, and that's where we, we as a city do have that ability to pull some levers, where we choose not to make our own proactive investments in sewer and water can help to a certain extent. You know, development, a lot of our development community has been active in doing that. In fact, the one in South Meridian has been done by developer. They're the ones that are pulling it to our park, to the home of our next fire station. So development in that area is actually helping us potentially do something, whether we want to do it or not, from that perspective. North Meridian, we're in a little different situation. We are in control of placing the sewer infrastructure if we want to grow and develop in that area, but we've been talking, at least the previous council and this has been talking very much about what that area's going to look like and the amount of resources that we're talking about investing. And with the road improvements to Chindon and Ten Mile and many of those other roads in that area, you know, roads are, I think, an important part of this conversation when it comes to not just where the schools are going to be, but what's the road like in that area? And quite frankly, with Chindon being developed or improved all the way out to Highway 16, that makes that area in that northwest fields area much more viable to develop because you don't have to make the road infrastructure improvements as other areas of our community as a consideration. But I think it will be important, based upon whatever this conversation ends, we need to match this up with what the ACHD five-year work plan will look like, where they plan on making improvements. I'm hopeful, you know, the schools, we kind of already know to a certain extent some of where their investment will be, but that this would also give them a roadmap to a certain extent and a timeframe. And I think the conversation we even had with the development last week, where we talked about a date certain for, before they said that they would pull a building permit, those are conversations we can talk about from a timing standpoint, where if we, if it's important to us to have a new fire station, does that play into this consideration? You know, what is our timing for this? And I, you know, from my perspective, I'm looking at four years. What do I have influence in helping do for four years to plan for? And that's where, when I'm talking about growth priorities, areas, that's what I think we're really looking at. Where as a city are we looking at working with our partners to make investment? And let's not mistake, the development community is our partner in this conversation. To council president's point, they need to be hearing what we're saying and we need to be listening to them as to what makes sense and doesn't make sense from that perspective.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Can you help maybe articulate from a process standpoint, what would be the difference between city hall internal process? If somebody's, if an applicant comes to us in an area that we've identified as a priority area versus an area that wasn't a priority? I mean, Councilmember Burton hit it, I think, pretty accurately. We don't, we're not saying we're closed. I hope that's not the intention. So if I'm an applicant and I live in a growth area and I want to develop, what does that look like for me differently than somebody who may go across the street from a growth area?
I'm going to speak for Caleb for one second on this, but I think that, you know, if you, last year when we were going through the comp plan, planning department gave, I think, some feedback to certain developers, like council doesn't have a lot of interest in modifying or processing comp plan amendments during this timeframe. I think that's, that's what you would start with, is a general message of council's not been supportive of searing outside of the shed. So if that's what it takes for you to do your development, we're never going to tell no one no. Anyone has the right to apply from that standpoint. But I think it's really giving the planning staff the ability to give direction to the development community about where we want growth to occur and where we don't want growth to occur, but they're always welcome to move forward.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
I probably won't get any closer than 90,000 feet on this at first blush, but what I might have missed from you or Dave is understanding the broader principles that this is trying to address that led to the selection of the metrics on the screen in front of us. There's probably something that was defined that led you to say, for example, five-minute response time as opposed to police response time or proximity to parks or five-year work plan overlay with ACHD or... So what were those principles that made the list on the left be the ones, the right ones to address?
Councilman Borton, it was really where we have our services and where they have a right. That's, that's what it really came down to. We have not overlaid the other elements that could or should matter to that point. But it's, I start with the, with the general premise in any of these conversations, that Meridian residents who currently pay taxes should get the services that they're paying for. And when we can display that our fire department can't get to a home within five minutes under the ideal conditions, is my understanding, this doesn't take into account traffic jams otherwise, that I think helped lay the groundwork or some of the conversation in looking at these two areas specifically. But no, nothing else has been taken into consideration at this point in time in terms of parks, roads, schools, just city, city services. We, the police department was in the room for the conversation. They are much more mobile, they admit that, and as you grow, you can expect additional officers from that standpoint. The police department does envision a South Meridian station, just like a North Meridian station. So if we determine both of these areas, for example, would be the priorities, you could probably see them coming forward to say, okay, well, we need to be thinking about where that station should be. If it's just one, then maybe they would real, they would prioritize their resources to that area. Our ultimate point was, we can't do what we've been doing, which is growing all the way along this ridge effectively for the long term. Or outside of sewer sheds where that can create a larger issue.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
I'm curious if, and I, maybe I'm sure we'll find out more based on what the legislature does, but are you of the opinion now that we already need to make a choice between sort of prioritizing the southeastern part of Meridian versus the northwestern part based on a resourcing perspective?
Councilwoman Strater, I'm hoping not. I'm hoping we don't have to do that. But if the legislature were, for example, to do a zero or 2%, I think we would have to seriously consider it, if our goal is to create a, build a fire station in one of these two areas. Other things, not necessarily.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's important to keep in mind, it's also a question of timeframe, you know, right? So, you know, it doesn't mean that people can come in front of us in a non-priority growth area with a thought process or an idea or a proposal on how they want to build services or that we couldn't consider it. I think what that would be signaling to people is, you know, look, if you want to, you want to build a significant development in an area that we haven't invested in a sewer shed and the trunk line to support it, that would be a huge infrastructure investment for the city that frankly, it sounds like our taxpayers can't pay for at this point and that that situation is going to be exacerbated potentially. So, you know, I don't, I don't think it's that we're closed for business. It's really, we're having to grow very smart and we're going to have to, it sounds like, make some, hopefully not, but maybe making some difficult choices in terms of prioritization. You know, having a, having a major high school in an area, that to me just, it may be my bias as a parent, but I just think we can't have a high school that's not supported by an adequate fire response time. That, to me, is a bright line. I don't think we have a choice about that. So I could give feedback on that for sure.
Councilman Hoagland.
Just to, and along Councilwoman Strater's points about, you have a, have a high school there and, and we've got yellow out there, meets the criteria as you've defined, and we've got yellow in other areas. And you look at Eustick Road, for example, and ACHD will have to invest, and we have competing proposals where, do you approve something in yellow in the northwest or is it in the south where they're dealing with limited funds? And what, you know, in some ways, I'm thinking, maybe my comments aren't helpful to developers to know where we're coming from because there are so many variables when a development comes before us. That's, that's the hard part. And competing interests in areas that you go, yes, that meets criteria, it fits, and that fits, but when you're dealing with other entities, the schools and their capacity and ACHD and their ability to fund road expansion purposes, that's, that's, that's what makes it difficult. So it's hard to give direction saying, okay, everything in this color will, looks good to me, but it just doesn't work that way. And in fact, your point, Mr. Mayor, about Chindon being expanded is very helpful, but to get to that point, you had to approve the development to get the funding for private entities to expand and receive tax dollars in rebate. That wasn't being funded just to, we can have future development, it was, had to be funded by development because the dollars weren't there. So that's kind of the, the deal that we're dealing with in some of these situations. That's only on state highways, doesn't apply to county roads. So it's, it's, it's an interesting conundrum when, when these applications come before us and it's just one of those things we have to, have to work through. That's why I get paid the big bucks, right?
So just to kind of, like, as I, just to kind of help us move to the next place, because as I said, this was just meant to have a general conversation at this point in time. Does anyone disagree that those are, those two areas are not the areas we should at least be focusing further on at this point in time? Is there another area on this map that you say, no, I think this should be our priority growth area as compared to those two? This is just the first step.
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember.
When you say these two areas, are you referencing north-west Meridian and southeast Meridian?
Correct. From outside of infill, but yes. Because those are the two areas we can go look further at over the next two weeks as we see what the legislature does and see what the possibilities could be or not be. Because to the point, we can overlay the ACHD five-year work plan, but we can also prioritize road projects if we think it's important into one or two of those areas, more so than the other in S K C H D Y, because this is where we're making investments, where we would like to see investments, where we'd like to see our partners make investments, all those different elements.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
A question maybe for you and your staff. Priority to me sometimes is singular. Does staff have a recommendation about which one is more of a priority?
Councilman Cavanagh, we've not asked staff to make that conversation. I think we, I think we all agree that we both see the challenges and the needs for both of these areas at this point in time.
Councilwoman Pearl.
Just wanted some clarification. So am I of the understanding that this map is going to continue to evolve and that we will be adding additional layers from, with information from ACHD and perhaps the school district before we ultimately define what our set of priority growth areas are?
Because, yes, absolutely. We plan on having a conversation with their, with them to get any feedback if they see something differently from that standpoint.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, what you're asking is then to focus then on that northwest and that southeast area to do additional information gathering, talking to our partners, school district, ACHD and others to see what information's needed, what information you can provide back to us and the planning staff to, to determine how we can move forward in those areas?
Councilman Hoagland, yes, that is the ultimate question. And I think, as I mentioned before, it plays right into we're having a conversation about a police station in this area. We've talked about investing dollars from our planning staff to do a more in-depth analysis of those four square miles up in that area. We have a library going in, we have road improvements going in. So, you know, we can bring all that back as to the whys from that standpoint. But if for some reason council were all of a sudden say southeast Meridian is a higher priority, then we should really think about whether or not the investment should continue up in northwest and convert, or conversely, maybe northwest is where we do it and southeast grows as development grows, but we do so knowing that we may not be able to provide a five-minute response time. And is that, is council okay with that? And there's no requirement that there's a five-minute response time.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
To that point, and maybe the Councilmember Borton talked about, this is really a 90,000 foot view. What neighboring jurisdictions with, I forget what the term is, where we support each other, what that does to response times along, I mean, specifically around our, our easterly border and perhaps part of our northerly border? Mutual aid, is that, is that correct? And what that, if that has any impact on our, on our response times? And does the city of Boise, Eagle, Starr, and our county partners, do they adopt that same five-minute response time? Counselor, or Mayor Simson kind of was quick to point out, there's nothing that requires that. So what, what are other jurisdictions are adopting as well, if you get to know?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, to the point of travel time, that is a jurisdictional decision. The national recommendation is four minutes. That's very tough for any jurisdiction to meet. We have not found one yet in the country that's able to meet that. You literally have to have fire stations about every three blocks. The city of Boise, for example, is a little bit less than ours. Some of the more rural departments have not set those standards. They're typically a one-station department covering 80 square miles, so they're a little bit resourced then. As to the mutual aid aspect, I did meet with the fire chiefs in the northwest corner, where we have known that's going to be a priority at some point in time, to the mayor's point. We met with the Napa chief and the Starr chief. They have no stations planned in that area, especially over into the four square miles, or sorry, the, yeah, four square miles, I did have that right. Currently, that is, that four square miles is in the Starr Fire District minus the areas that we have already annexed. But the Starr Fire Chief knows eventually that is the city's area of impact and we will be looking to annex that. In the south with Cuna, Cuna Fire Department has one station currently. They're looking at building a second station, but that is actually going further east than the city of Cuna. They have large development going on out there and that is their planned second station. So to answer your question, in the area, do we have strong mutual aid that could help cover, not, not really from those two departments, both north and south?
Mr. Mayor, just to follow. Councilman Cavanagh.
Chief, when you talk about Boise's a little bit less, is less meaning they're faster than us?
Faster.
And what's their, what does their...
I think theirs is 430. I'd have to confirm that, but I believe that's what it is.
Mr. Mayor, I think that kind of gets to at least where I stand at this, and it has been this piece that I really wrestled with about this term priority growth area. If the conversation is where do we need to have our next fire station, I think without a doubt northwest corner is where it needs to be. The council members, Strater's comments, we've got a high school that's going there. We've got to support the folks that are out there. I struggle with saying this is the area where we're going to, I don't know, apply our services or to create incentives that grow in a certain area, something along those lines. I'm not quite there on that particular piece. I mean, maybe this is me just not being astute to it, but all of Meridian's a priority for us. And I'm not trying to say that for any of us it's not, but to say one area is more important than another right now is not something, at least I'm comfortable coming to that conclusion. It's just, it's just not something that I'm, I feel really comfortable saying one way or another at this point.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pearl.
If I may address your concern, Councilman Cavanagh, I, I don't know that that's what we're trying to, to say. I think it's more along the lines of the development community has, has really encouraged us to help them understand where we'd like to see the city move and grow. And not only that, but there are a lot of questions that come into the city about why a certain service isn't provided or a certain location or a certain time. And so this helps us be able to clarify those specific parcel-by-parce... And so this helps us be able to clarify those specific parcel-by-parcels answers as well. So I wasn't sure if you were getting at, you know, is there a point to making this map, or if you're just, or if your concern is that we may give an impression to the property that's not in those priority growth areas, that they're not important to us? I don't think that that's what we're trying to communicate, and I think the way that we share this information is important. I think that's sort of what you're putting out there, is that we want to be really clear what the purpose of the priority growth areas are, that it's for us to help manage our budget, it's for us to help figure out how we move forward as a city, and then also to help our development community as well. So that wasn't actually really why I spoke up, though. I spoke up because for me, the piece that's missing is, I would like to see, I realize there's a lot going on in this map, and there's, it looks like there's even more sections that can be added, but I would like to see also an overlay of which parcels are in development stage, or which applications have been approved, if that could be added to this map, so that we can see, because if I am remembering correctly, there are a lot of homes going into the southeast area, or that are planned to go into the southeast area, not as many going into the northeast area, even though we have a high school there. So I'm curious if there's any way for us to use the tool that the planning department already has, which shows what our current applications are, and at the time that we make that final decision about our priority growth areas, that we can see some sort of overlay of where those applications have been approved, because the amount of approvals that have happened are significant.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Miles.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Pearl, we can certainly talk to the IT and planning department about layers to add. It became such a cluttered mess to work with it. Preliminary plaits are something that can be added very easily, and I think to the, to some of the points of all the discussion, the preliminary discussion of where do you start, what do you add, what do you show, was what we were hearing from you all, considering applications, as well as what planning's working on from the comp plan perspective, and sort of a starting point of saying, okay, of the city services, which one are those most, those highest priority services that we should look at as we consider building a map as a tool to support your decisions and help guide you as you make your decisions? So that was some of the why with the fire response and the annexation and the sewers.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hockland. One of the things, too, that we need to consider, to that point of having an overlay, Dave, is maybe we take a look at commercial areas that are available for development, because I think that's going to be a prime driver. In many ways, we're going to respond to where development is going. I mean, we're not going to drive that, and when you look at Highway 16 and what's occurring out there, there's going to be major development there and down Chindon, and if they ever get a Highway 16 extension, enough money for that, but I'm not holding my breath. But to me, with the high school and with development that's planned out there, that makes that the 1A, as opposed to the 1B, which is in the south, for major areas to focus on. So we know what's being planned out there commercially, there's going to be a lot of money invested, and it's commercial, it's going to be residential, they're building a high school there for a reason, because of the growth that's happening. We're going to continue to grow in the southeast, but we only have so much money, and where do we put that? Probably that northwest area.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Strader.
I really take Councilman Hockland's point well, and I agree with that. I think it's, we're going to develop southeast Meridian, and we're going to be developing the whole city eventually. I don't think we're saying that any part of Meridian is not important. I think it's a question of timeframe, but it's a question of our investment in infrastructure, and how much it costs, and what it makes sense to pay for at any given time, right? And so if we focus on our infill development, and we try to prioritize where we clearly will need to put a fire station, if we want to have any kind of decent service, you know, to these areas, that needs to become a priority compared to building a brand-new sewer trunk all the way to an area that we currently don't have development. Like, I am comfortable telling people, I would not feel comfortable approving a project now that would require an entire new sewer shed and a new sewer trunk because of the exorbitant cost at this time. I don't think that would make sense for our budget. So I think it's okay to say that, you know? I don't think it's a negative thing, I think it's just helping people understand how we're prioritizing certain areas in terms of where we're investing in our own infrastructure.
With that, I'm happy to bring this conversation to a close. If you have additional comments or whatnot, please feel free to pass those along directly to Dave Miles. We will take this further, we will talk to our partners, and quite frankly, once the legislature wraps up for the year and we have an idea about what decisions we truly need to make, I think that's where we will have that conversation. My understanding is that they hope to give us a three- or four-year funding idea if they do something, or if they give us nothing, and then we'll know that as well, which makes this conversation very quick and very easy. Okay? Thank you. Turn this over to our fire chief.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, thank you. After that good discussion, we're now going to talk about virus. We understand the COVID-19, otherwise known as the coronavirus, which is making the news, is certainly on the minds of you all, it's on the minds of our employees, it's on the minds of our community. So we wanted to provide an update. JD and I are going to tag-team this, I'm going to talk a little bit in general terms about where we're at, and then JD Hendrick, our division chief of EMS, is going to talk a little bit about how we are prepared as emergency responders to handle an outbreak, should it occur here in Ada County. So as you know, if you follow the news, and I'm hoping I can direct you to the CDC's website, which we'll talk about in this presentation, as the factual news regarding COVID-19, but it is being updated daily. This was taken last night. If you look at it today, we're up to 60 cases, and the numbers are changing. Currently, 12 states are involved, Idaho is not yet one of them. Does not mean that it's not here, it just hasn't been confirmed to be in Idaho. You can see as far as illnesses, there was two deaths as of yesterday, there's now six, those are in Washington State, all really centered around a healthcare facility, a nursing home in Kirkland, Washington. If we could, I'll just click through here. So there's a map, again, as of yesterday, I just looked at it before the presentation, that map has not changed as far as the number of states involved with confirmed cases. You can see Idaho's not one of them, but of concern for us is that we have Washington, that we know we have cases confirmed with deaths. We also have Oregon, as recently as yesterday, Pendleton, Oregon, at Wild Horse Casino, I believe, had a case there. So the concern is, we can't close our borders, as with any epidemic we have faced in the past, whether that's H1N1, whether that's swine flu, anything else we have faced in this valley potentially. This is another virus that we are prepared for, and we'll talk a little bit about that. So I want to talk a little bit about guidance. We just sent an email to all city employees this evening, while this discussion was being prepared, with some information to our employees on what they can do today and what the city is doing, moving forward as far as planning for any outbreak that we may have here in Ada County. Part of this recommendation is really what we can do as individuals in our business life and our personal life, to really help prevent that spread, and to keep each individual as safe as possible. Avoid close contact with people who are sick. The CDC recommends six feet, you'll see other numbers that say three feet, we recommend six. That's if you know they're sick, which I'll talk a little bit more, but understanding currently in Idaho, as well as most other states, the challenge with COVID-19 is that we have a parallel influenza outbreak as well. So trying to discern the symptoms, there's really no change in symptoms from one to the other, we'll talk about that a little bit. Avoid touching your eyes, nose, and mouth. A lot of people are fearful that COVID-19 is living on surfaces. The CDC will tell you right now, they anticipate that to live on a surface for about three hours max. What we need to be concerned about is heavy surface use, meaning door handles, some of those things that people are touching a lot. So part of our recommendation, that you can see below, is to wipe down those heavily-used surfaces, that's part of the recommendation from the CDC. Cover your cough or sneeze with a tissue, if you don't happen to have a tissue, I don't right now, and I've been sneezing today. Just sneeze into your elbow, that helps protect. Really what we're trying to avoid in any virus spread is those droplets that come out when you sneeze or cough. That's really what the fear is, and that's what the carry is, going person to person. Clean and disinfect frequently touched objects, we covered that. Follow the CDC recommendations using a face mask. There is a shortage of face masks right now in this country. The face masks are heavily needed for healthcare workers, nurses, emergency responders. The CDC is strongly recommending, if you think you might protect yourself with a face mask, it's not going to do a lot of good if you follow the other guidelines. There's a lot of folks that are buying face masks as kind of a protective measure. If we follow the guidelines, that shortage will be stopped, and we can produce more face masks. I talked to the chief of Spokane, Sacred Heart, they're a little bit concerned because they're running out of face masks. So we want to make sure the healthcare workers have those. If you are infected, hopefully, as part of the advice is, you're going to see your doctor, he or she will recommend a face mask if they feel it's appropriate. So that's kind of the issue with face masks. Wash your hands often, this is the most important thing to help spread any virus, is to wash your hands often. And I also noticed you have gel in front of you. We're also making sure there's gel in every department in the city. That is another quick and easy, if you don't have access to soap and water, that alcohol gel helps to contain that spread of any germs, any virus. So really, we're focused on this message right now, is how we can prevent that spread. This also goes with the flu as well, this is the same guidelines you have with influenza. Whoa, I did not mean to do that. That's not part of the presentation, really. All right, little help, Chris? There we go. So what are we doing as a city to prepare for this? We had an initial meeting, a planning meeting, with the mayor, his staff, also in attendance, were the police chief, HR, legal, and finance, to talk about how we're going to move forward, how we're going to communicate. Some of the work that we're doing with the emergency management committee will be coming up. That same committee is the one, for your knowledge, that we're around, that kind of managed the Snowmageddon event here in Meridian, and made sure we were prepared and also mitigated that. We're working in very strong coordination with Ada County Emergency Management. Some of you know Joe Lombardo, that's Joe's office in the county that really oversees emergency management for the county, as well as coordination with Health and Welfare, CDC, and then our local health district. We're working with AICAM on the communication out to the public and employees. Couple other points on this, because this is a new virus, there's not a lot known. That's the challenge with this virus. It's a novel virus, it's new, it has its own strains, there's not a lot known, we're learning as we go with this one, much like we learned with H1N1, much like we learned with SARS, much like we learned with swine flu as well. Currently testing for COVID-19, there's an approval process, if you will, between the healthcare provider and the health district. So I know, I've been asked quite a bit, I don't feel good, should I go get tested for coronavirus? Number one, that's a discussion you're going to have with your primary care physician or an urgent care physician. Number two, that decision will be made by that physician. We're not here to recommend one way or the other, but I think a lot of people think they can run to the urgent care and get tested, that's not necessarily the case. If you don't have a lot of the checkboxes, if you will, the travel, the exposure, et cetera, you may not get tested, because, again, there is a strong epidemic, or I wouldn't say epidemic, a strong influenza predominance going on right now, and this mirrors the influenza as well, so. The other information that we'll be releasing to the public in a unified voice throughout the county is, we really want to push people to the CDC website. This is where the most factual information is going to be, and the most up-to-date information is going to be. We're encouraging folks not to use Facebook as your means of news with regards to coronavirus, or Twitter, Snapchat, or, I don't know what the other ones are, I'm getting older. And sometimes the nightly news even kind of accentuates things a little bit. So we really want to push people to the CDC website for the most up-to-date, relevant, factual information. Here in Idaho, we want to push you to the Idaho Department of Health and Welfare. They are tracking COVID-19 in Idaho, and that's really where we're getting our information, so that's where we want you to get your information as well. Central District Health, we also encourage folks to go on there. They have not yet ramped up any coronavirus information, but they are mirroring the Department of Health and Welfare for the state of Idaho. So I'm going to turn it over to JD, and then we'll wrap up and follow up with some questions, I'm sure there's a bunch, but we want to talk a little bit about what Ada County responders are doing in preparation in case any outbreak occurs, so I'll turn this over to JD.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pearl.
JD, can you just scroll back one, just so I can take a picture of that screen, just for like two seconds, please? We're good, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Kind of going forward a little bit, as far as the fire department in Ada County's response, as you see before you, this is kind of the standard flu response that we would get if we suspect somebody with the flu. So our responders are going to have gloves, glasses, masks, and if possible, to have gowns as well. Right now, there's a shortage of all these items, and so we're trying to figure out how we can best supply those. Right now, we do feel that we have enough gloves and masks for what would be a significant call volume in the next few weeks. As far as on-scene, if the person has been evaluated by our responders, both with Ada County and Meridian Fire, through their assessment, if they feel through these questions that the patient has, is suspicious of the coronavirus, then they will then contact the EMS battalion chief, and then contact the hospital and preps for them to send a patient to the hospital. The hospitals all are working with us on this preparation, they have special rooms specifically designed to have these patients if they were to so show up, and so this is mostly just relying on the hospitals and their reliability, or their availability to handle this. And then after the call, we're just encouraging all of our crews to just continuously use substances like bleach solution to wipe our equipment that we've used on scene, and we're trying to limit the amount of personnel that are within that six-foot rainbow area, you might say, to, so that we don't have so many firefighters and EMS folks exposed to that specific person. So we're trying to limit the number of people right there, close to that person, doing face-to-face interactions. And then lastly, we did kind of do an emergency online training that was sent out February 3rd, so all of our providers have received the information, and we're keeping up to date with CDC and Central District Health recommendations as they add. Another thing that's happening, hopefully, with the 911 dispatch center, is that they are supposed to be asking people if, because they're getting inundated with flu-like symptoms, just in the normal influenza call screening, but they're trying to ask these people if they have had any travel, or any sort of connection with people who have traveled outside of the United States, specifically Southeast Asia. But the call-takers can only do as best as they're provided information, but they have been given guidelines as to what to ask, and hopefully they can be able to kind of buffer some of the responses that were going on. And then we're working with all of our access partners, specifically Central District Health and the Center for Disease Control, to make sure that we're up to date on all this stuff. We have a major planning session for Thursday morning, all the major players will be there, and then we are, of course, working with Ada County Office of Emergency Management in preparation for this. And with that, we'll stand for questions if you have any.
Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor, let me, if I could, let me get to one more thing that I didn't cover in the update. From the city of Meridian's standpoint, the city currently has a COOP plan, it's called a continuity of operations plan. We did that with the county about six, seven years ago. It's a plan that allows us to know if we have to shut this building down, for example, for whatever reason, wind event, epidemic, whatever the issue is, where are we going to move people to, so that we can continue our essential services? That plan also identified within each department, if we had to send people home, who are essential, who are nonessential. If you look at the CDC guidelines, and they just put one out today for employers, we're really following, and what we have in that plan is the best practice, in case we have to shut some folks down, in case we have extreme absenteeism. If we have a lot of our folks, our employees, that get, infected is the word that came to mind, sorry, that they have to be off work for a prolonged period of time, now how do we make it up? How do we cross over, how do we make sure the city can still run? So we do have that plan in place. If we exhaust all our resources, to Councilman Cavanagh's point about mutual aid even, we've talked about that as fire chiefs. If a department of one gets heavily infected and they lose all their employees, how can we help them out? How can they... How can they help us out? So, those discussions are taking place as well. I apologize if I didn't cover that earlier.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Mark kind of teed up kind of where my question is. I work for a national organization, we're having conversations right now about allowing nonessential employees to be able to work from home, and, you know, keep your laptop with you in case you had to close down a building. From a operations standpoint, I'm just curious, are we starting to have those discussions with our employees? And then, what type of communication, yes, are you getting a lot of requests from the public about this, what we're doing to educate the public from City Hall about this?
Two great questions.
Go ahead.
All right, perfect. From the standpoint of essential, nonessential staff, if we had to go there, the only update we're doing, and we're getting the director team together, is when the plan was created six, seven years ago, we have some different players now.
Yeah.
And so, we'll make sure that that plan is updated, so that we know if we have to flip that switch, who's essential, who's nonessential. We're working with IT to talk about remote work, and how many people can we get on that server remotely, all those good things that I'm sure you're talking about as well. And then, your second question, community outreach, community messaging. We want to make sure, in this county and Meridian's no different, that our message to the community in general is the same. We don't want conflicting message Boise to Nampa to Meridian. So, that's where that work with Joe Lombardo's office, to make sure the message is consistent with the healthcare system, et cetera. We will steer folks to the right place, for example, the websites. I think it's very important, too, to understand, and I think you all understand this, if an epidemic occurs, there's only a certain level of things that our city can do. We can help our community get information, we can help educate them, but when it comes to who gets quarantined, who doesn't, as an example, we do not make that call. That's the health district that makes that call through the healthcare system. So, I think there's a lot of apprehension on what's the city doing. I think we're doing a good job, we'll do even better as we continue to meet on getting that information out to the community. But I think in times like this, Sno-mageddon was a good example, we also need to be honest with the community, what are we providing and what can we provide? And what we can't provide, here's the resources to make sure you know who to ask.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burr.
You know, we all have our different social media ways in which we communicate with those that are interested in what our opinions are and what we're doing. I would advise our city council to probably stay away from advertising, you know, different aspects of this coronavirus. If you feel like you want to advertise or share posts that have been made by the city that are, that have been worked out with our stakeholder partners as well, I think that's fine.
Yep.
But I do believe there's a lot of misinformation out there in regard to this situation, so I don't think it's our responsibility to be the experts of the coronavirus in the city of Meridian. So, I would hope that we would just step back, let the city operate, and share what the city gives us or shares the public, and I think that would be fine.
Certainly. Mr. Mayor, Councilman Burr, to that point, Shandy is very involved with Joe Lombardo's office from a PIO. We just talked about this today in the meeting with the mayor. Joe's office is planning on doing the social media outreach on facts. Shandy will tie into that and, you know, re-Facebook, re-tweet, re-whatever the others are, to make sure that we're consistent in the messaging, that the right messaging is getting out. It's a great point.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Scher.
Thank you very much for the update. I think one thing that might be helpful, I like to focus on things that we can control, and one thing that I've, that has occurred to me, I just want to throw it out there, is we are having, you know, a lot of public hearings, we have sometimes large groups of people coming into City Hall. I just think from a practical perspective, if we did see, you know, community transmission of the COVID-19, you know, would we want to explore, or do we have a plan for like a hosted conference call, for example, as an alternative for a public hearing if someone wanted to participate? I just want to throw that out there, because there's good technology to have hosted conference calls, and conference calls have come up in the past as a potential technology we wanted to explore, and maybe this set of circumstances would lead us to explore that a little more, just so we could keep, you know, business as usual in the event that this did happen. I would hate for us to be unable to have a public hearing for something.
I'll reply just that a little bit. There are certain technological limitations. They're in conflict with your statement. We can't do business as usual and do a hosted conference call, even from a technology standpoint. We, I mean, we do have the ability to have one person in this room and everyone else could call in, from the city council perspective, but we don't have the ability to do is to do a meeting in here and have a hosted conference call that pipes in so everyone else in the room can hear, and some of those elements, those were some of the challenges why we had to back off of that, being able to take remote testimony from that standpoint. So, it would be somewhat of a legal question from that standpoint, in terms of what would, what we could legally do if we were to do it differently.
Just a follow-up, you know, in my business, in the past, we had hosted bank meetings with hosted conference calls with certain providers, where they did have the ability to have a speaker line for folks that were presenting, and then, they would have a mechanism for participants to call in, provide their name, address, contact information, and dial a number to ask a question. And so, I'm, you know, maybe it's an AV thing and also a legal thing, but I just think it might make sense for us to look into it a little more, just because I've had direct experience with it, and it's worked great for hosting remote meetings that are controlled, where you can get people's critical information.
Councilwoman Scher, I'm not saying we can't do it, I'm saying we can't do it in this room with the public available as well, in the same, and stream it, that is not capable. We could certainly hold a meeting with the community on an outside conference call line to do that.
Thank you, that's helpful. And certainly, it would, you know, plan for the worst, hope for the best, but maybe it makes sense to make like a backup plan.
All right. Thank you, Chiefs, appreciate it very much.
I do believe that was J.D.'s first presentation?
It was.
In front of counsel? Yeah, I just wanted to point that out.
Great job.
Counsel, we are at item six on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burr.
They move that we move into executive session per IDO code 74-206D and F.
Second.
I have a motion in the second to move into executive session. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, court will call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Cavanagh?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Strater?
Aye.
Hoagland?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries.
Good times.
Yeah.
Speaking of Shandy and PR.
What to actually take on the on the side?
But I do think.
I see.
And they just look open, right? And everybody's.
Yep. The one I'm getting is like a track pad built into it, it's like, it's just, I mean, it's just another stitch of a laptop.
Like, I keep thinking, should I get a surface? You know, and I'm like, oh, no.
That's what they poisoned.
Just got the boy from New York City.
We sure talk a lot, don't we? You get paid by the word, though, you don't care. I don't know what.
The hardest things I actually did was scroll with Katie.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Two weeks ago.
Yeah.
And then what?
What's that?
I don't like to call.
I know, but I'm first, I call the twenty-four.
Those are the ones that were taken, one at twelve.
Yeah, one AM, twelve-thirty.
Yes, they were.
I have to go to work again.
So...
Do you remember those?
Yeah.
Is that where you go?
Or I get a really good war, and you're technically here, but they were safe.
Yeah.
I think they're alive, but we...
We'll be far working.
Oh, okay, sorry, I was thinking of the last.
We can screenshot, yeah.
Yeah.
All the layers that are options.
I guess it's like a coffee, it's literally.
We can screenshot, yeah.
Yeah.
All the layers that are options.
I guess it's like a coffee, it's literally.
We can screenshot, yeah.
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 We can screenshot, yeah.